Okay. Let's call the... If you guys have a hard time hearing, just let us know because we can move these around and pick up the sound better. Let's go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting of January 9th, 2025 to order. I'd like to welcome all the public. I'll share some thoughts after we do a roll call. Commissioners in attendance: Cody Nielsen, Melissa Rig, TC Garcia, Ann Austin, Shay Walker, Lloyd Wilson, Trent Schaefer. Staff: Kristin Bushnell, Mac McDonald. Jenz Nelson is online. I know we have commissioners. Okay, where?
Mitch is on the round.
County Commissioners: Mon and Stubbs are in the room somewhere. But we do welcome you. You know, we've been working on this zoning for years, literally. We've, you know, I will tell you, we're not experts, but I've got some of the greatest people that surround me that I certainly appreciate. Do we make mistakes all the time? And I do want to apologize for things that we've said that we shouldn't have. So I want you to know that. We are human. Like I said, we make mistakes in writing and we make mistakes in our decisions. So just keep that in mind. Would somebody from the public like to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Is there any way of speaking up a little bit?
Yeah. I also want us to keep our neighbors to the west in our thoughts and prayers as their communities are burning up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, conflict of interest disclosure. Anybody? Again, this is a broad brush statement, but I think it would be hard to say yes at this point in time, but anybody got a conflict of interest to declare? None. Okay. Moving on to the minutes, we have November 14th and let's... Do you want these individual or?
We can match them out.
Okay, I'm good with that. Everybody had a chance to read those three meetings?
I have, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay, so on the November 14th minutes. Help me understand which page that is. So item three. The first paragraph doesn't make sense. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so it's on packet page. Well, I don't know how you want to look at it. But that first paragraph, item three, that paragraph doesn't make sense.
Okay, I want me to reevaluate?
Yeah, just, yeah, fix that. And then on December 30th, when we were talking about the ordinance. So my understanding of the conversation is that the internal process would be that we would be notified when there was an application for a subdivision and if anybody complained about, if any of the neighbors complained about the subdivision. This says we're only going to be notified of approved subdivisions. So...
So just change the list of applied subdivisions?
Yeah, we discussed an internal process to notify commissioners of subdivision applications and complaints about proposed subdivisions, along with a list of approved subdivisions. Was that sort of everybody else's understanding? Yeah, okay. That was it.
Okay. Any other comments? Corrections? Hearing none. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 14th, December 16th, and December 30th, 2024. Any other comment?
With changes, right.
With changes. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we've, we've got public comment and we've got public hearing right after that. The public hearing is for the 2025 Land Use Development and Management Ordinance. So we'll keep... Just, just remember, if you're making a comment on the ordinance, let's do that during the public hearing. During the public comment, that's, that's for things that are either on the agenda or not on the agenda. I do want to remind everybody to be respectful. And, and, you know, I don't want public comments addressed at individual people up here. You know, so we'll, we'll respect you and we expect the same from you. So anyway, public comment, we'll have in-house first and then if there's online, we'll have them second.
Trent, Trent, before we open it for public comment, I mean, I think we've talked a little bit. Sorry about that. I'm so sorry. We've talked a little bit about changes we want to make to what has been online already. And I think before we, I mean, I think it'd be important to let everybody here know that we've, we've made some changes based on the feedback we have gotten. Or at least we haven't made them because we haven't voted on it. But, but like the animal densities, we're, we're taking that out. So if you're here to, to talk about animal densities, we are taking that out of this ordinance. Or at least that's what the majority of us sort of informally agreed. And that's based on the feedback that we have received. And I think that's the big one. I mean, I may be, I know we've never taken a vote on it, but I think a lot of people are here because they're concerned about their ability to use their animals. And we're not going to mess with that. We're taking that off the table.
And that would have been for the public hearing.
And that would have been for the public. But, but I mean, it might save us all a lot of time. Right? I just, I just want to put that out there.
So you're saying that anybody who wants to make a comment about the whatever, the new ordinance needs to sit down?
Until the public hearing.
And save it for later.
We'll move to that next.
That's, that'll be during the public meeting or the public hearing. Anything not on the agenda? Okay. Anybody got their hand up?
Anybody for public comment online, not on the agenda items or anything else? Yes, so we'll be moving to that next. All right, Carrie, you're on. Go ahead.
Hi, did you say Carrie?
Yep, you're up.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I wanted to make a comment on the zoning changes. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
No.
Okay, when is the appropriate time to do that?
Stand by, we're moving into that next step.
Okay.
During the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Will you remind everybody that we have a three minute?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you did move on.
Okay. All right. We'll entertain a motion for going into a public hearing for the 2025 Land Use Development and Management Ordinance.
I will move.
I'll second.
Okay, get a motion and a second to go into the public hearing for the Land Use Development Ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we did have a sign-up sheet over here. I probably... We won't actually require you to be on that, but let's, let's have the sign-up sheet and then we'll go down the order from that. Did one of our people pick it up? But I, I won't limit it to just that. So if somebody... Yeah.
That sign-up sheet is right in front of the "Ann," right on that corner.
So again, just as a reminder, the animal and, and animal density section has been taken out of this ordinance. So, you know, rest in peace about that. Anyways, we'll...
Did you close off? Because a lot of us couldn't even get into the room.
No. I, I already said I will not limit it to this. Okay? Okay. Okay, three minutes. Mark Anderson.
Give me a one-minute warning. Okay. All of you people up here. I'm for smaller government, not bigger government. This land use thing, I don't know what all's in it. But just like Section 11, Section 9 needs to go in the trash. You guys don't have any business telling people they can't have one RV for the parents and one RV for the kids. You have no business telling people out in the middle of nowhere, away from cities, that they can't rent their RVs on a nightly basis. Okay? The, I, I talked to somebody who was sitting here before the meeting. And, and they were like, well, yeah, there's two sides to this. We need to protect people. Okay, it is not the government's job to protect me. They're worried about people living in an RV that's not designed to be lived in forever and they're living in it full-time. So what? That's their business. If it falls apart around them, they get to buy another one. People come to this county and pay taxes because it's a cheap place to come and live. And you start limiting what they can do cheaply and you're going to stop having people come in here, pay taxes. So it is my vote that 9 gets axed. Oh, this guy that I talked to, he says, well, people are just dumping their waste on the ground. Well, the county has now made it so expensive to put in a septic system that it's almost impossible. What's that?
One minute.
Thank you. So I asked this gentleman, what's the difference between dumping their waste on the ground and dumping it into a septic system that still flows it into the ground? Okay, I don't agree with pouring waste on the ground. But I don't think it's the government's job to tell us what we can do with our property concerning RVs. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Can I please remind everybody to state your name when you come up here and where you're from?
Mark Anderson.
And where are you from, Mark?
I live one and a half miles...
I don't need exactly. LaSalle, Blanding, Monticello?
Up on the mountainside.
Here?
West of Monticello.
Okay.
Kendall?
My name's Kendall Laws and I'm from Blanding. So I, I know that a lot of time and effort has already been put into this plan. However, it's clear that it's not ready to go to the county commission. I would encourage you to go through each provision of this ordinance and ask yourself three questions. What problem are we solving? Does this provision actually solve that problem in the least restrictive way? And does the sent, does this provision fulfill the purpose and needs listed in Chapter 2, Section 1? If the answer is no, or if the answer is not a resounding yes to all three, then the sentence should be restructured or reconsidered. I want to give a couple of, of brief examples of some internal inconsistencies with, with your plan as well. So private roads are defined as a road on privately owned property limited to the use of the owner or a group of owners who share the use and maintain the road without assistance from the county. A private road has not been given to or accepted by the county for public use and maintenance. That seems fine until you read Chapter 7, Section 6, which requires that without any triggering event noted anywhere in the ordinance, that all private roads in all zones must be 15-foot wide with a minimum of six inches of road base and two inches of gravel. How, have, have any of you calculated how expensive that will be? Especially considering the restrictions on gravel pits in this ordinance. If I want a road that goes from my house to my barn, that road requires a higher standard than 25% of the county's Class B roads. That's ridiculous. Have, have any of you read the county general plan? How about the resource management plan? So the county RMP works in conjunction with the state RMP to hold the BLM accountable under FLIPMA. BLM is required to be as consistent as possible with the state and county RMPs. Have you compared the provisions of this ordinance with the county general plan or RMP? If you have, you'll realize that it falls grossly short. For example, one simple answer, example, the county resource management plan sets a, a standard of no net loss of AUMs for grazing. This plan, even with 11 taken out, this plan will result in losses of AUMs in San Juan County. So while the county and the citizens continuously fight, push back on BLM shenanigans in this county for not being consistent with local plans, this body is proposing an ordinance that is also inconsistent with that plan. How do we expect BLM compliance if we don't respect our own plans? So finally, I am relieved that the animal density section will be stricken from the ordinance. However, as a final illustration of my concerns with consistency of this ordinance with state law and the county plan, that section... Okay, I'll, I'll call there. Can I take 20 seconds?
Yep.
So, so that section would have restricted animal feedlots or high-density feeding, okay? However, in 2021, 2021, the state legislature through Senate Bill 130, made it clear that any restrictions to this type of facility needed to be in place prior to February 1st, 2022. So it's, it's a blessing that you removed it, but if you hadn't have removed it, it would have been in violation of state law from the time that it was passed. So those are the types of things that I am concerned about and I think that, that it merits you taking a little bit more time to look through it. Thank you.
Joy Howell.
I am she. Joy Howell, Mexican Hat. So I actually want to thank you all for lighting a fire under our derrieres. Although I'm glad you removed all the rules concerning the animals for the time being at least, there's many other issues that need to be addressed. Personally, I think, actually, not just personally, but this entire act is more fitting for a homeowners association.
Amen.
I kind of like the smell of cattle, you know? Sounds of livestock. Wildlife perfume, not so much. You know, nuisance laws and offense to your senses, an ugly sign, an old tractor, a fence too high or low, the sense that missing is here is common sense. No more, somebody had already said no more than one RV, which I agree with all of that. By the way, RVs have their own septic systems that allows us to use them off-grid and we should be emptying them lawfully. Absolutely. Dumping illegal, illegally should be heavily fined. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I don't know why. I have properties in Mexican Hat. This is my biggest concern, that are already a combination of several of your new zones. And I don't really know which streams of income I delete from my portfolio because I have gravel pits, motels, all in one of your zones that don't allow for everything I have. That's not right. Questions? Do any of you guys live even in any of the incorporated areas? You do? Okay.
Most of us.
So, all right, and you know, where some of this, like Bluff expanded their city limits, not to pick on anybody, but kind of in order to control growth and prevent competition. And this seems to be an addition to that overreach, which is very troubling because do you, I, do you, do you even have the authority to make these laws? And especially if they don't apply to you, your livestock or your address. Also, I've yet to hear how much money the county is going to lose if you don't sell us out. It's a $50,000 for the transportation fund? $500,000? Five billion? Is it worth it? Is that my time up?
Okay, well, it's a hard no for me anyway you look at it, but thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Crystal A. This is all because I wouldn't call her.
Just a small part.
Okay.
My name is Crystal Alvarez. I live east of Monticello. According to this new land use ordinance, I can build an airport, a landing strip, a helipad, electric vehicle charging stations, windmills, and even a resort on my agricultural property, but I can't build a church, a clinic, a barber shop, a mechanic shop, or even dog kennels. I can build a sawmill and, but I can't use my freshly milled wood in my cabinet shop because cabinet shops aren't allowed. I can build a grain mill, but I can't use my freshly milled grains in baked goods and bread because a bakery isn't allowed. I can raise cattle, sheep, pigs, and goats, but I can't butcher them because manufacturing of meat products isn't allowed. I can build 100 or more cabins for the specific purpose of short-term and overnight rentals, but an apartment complex to aid in the housing crisis isn't allowed. I can build a multimillion-dollar golf course on my agricultural property, but I wouldn't be able to serve food because restaurants of any kind are not allowed. I can have a farm stand to sell my farm produce, but I can't have a food truck to create a menu of delicacies made with my farm-fresh produce. Please refer to Section 1 titled Purpose, Paragraph 9. How does any of this provide fundamental fairness in the land use regulation? The number two point in your purpose section is promoting prosperity. Prosperity defined as the condition of being successful or thriving, especially economic well-being. Money, that's it. That's what this is about. That is specifically the second most important purpose of this land use ordinance. No part of San Juan County will ever be Moab, not Monticello, not Blanding, not Bluff. And that's a lot of the reason that many of us have remained here because we don't want it to be. This heavy-handed government over... This heavy-handed government overreach has no place here. Please leave us to our quiet, peaceful country lives that have been enjoyed for decades. Because if you think this county is poor now, just wait until the longtime locals band together to hire a lawyer to file suit. Don't sell out this county. We all know better than to trust our souls to some backward southern lawyer and we all know who will have blood stains on their hands. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Kent Dalton. Oh, okay. Because you can't get out? David Robinson. Okay, you can't get out either. Pew. Curtis. I couldn't read that.
Okay, I'm Curtis Pew. I live north of Blanding. I've been a resident of the county for, what, 48 years? 48 years I've been a resident, anyway. What's that?
You're older than that.
Okay, 50 years. Anyway, my nephew pointed out, I've been so busy doing, trying to live that I haven't paid close enough attention. But my nephew pointed out today, he said, hey, in this meeting thing, your business, taxidermist, where you're at, you can't do it. And I'm like, that don't make sense. I looked it up and as far as I could tell, that's what it said. So that's a problem. So we need to fix that. I've been paying taxes for 20 years or whatever on my business to the county. So hopefully that'll be looked at and taken care of. So... And all these other things, I've always had animals and all of that, but that's kind of, seems to be taken care of. I hope it has. And less government is better, in my opinion. Let private property be private property. People want to decide to do something, let them try it. If it fails, that's on them. So I guess that's all I need to say.
Thanks. David Goodman.
How you doing? My name's Dave Goodman. My wife and I are in Monticello. Again, I thought I was doing a sign-up sheet, so I didn't have anything prepared, but I would like to say a few things. About two and a half years ago, my wife moved to Monticello after about a 10-year search of the perfect landing spot. We happily said that we fled from an over bureaucratic state. I won't tell you which one it is because you'll all tease us. But I grew up there and I watched after little thing, after little thing, after little thing built up and built up and begin to squish the people that lived there and begin to squish what you were trying to do with our lives. And we purposely picked rural Monticello. We got 20 acres just outside of town to be with like-minded people who just want to live our lives and be left alone by the government. The way I see it, as long as I'm not doing anything illegal or harming my neighbors, you guys don't have any business being there. So I would just like to say I'm glad to hear about the animals thing too. I don't know how this all works. We're still getting to know the area. I don't know how this all works, we're still getting to know the area, but I think I'd feel a lot better about it after there was an actual vote, just so we all know for sure. And I would just like to say to everybody here, especially to those in charge of what happens in this county, be careful you don't turn into one of these places that nobody wants to live anymore. There are good people moving in from other states that want to be rural and, you know, kind of want to do what we have to do. And if anything, I would say, I think you guys could do a little more in removing restrictions on some of the things, like the cottage industry, the local farmers, letting us buy, sell, and trade whatever we want. If I get a sick cow from you, I'm probably not going to buy cows from you anymore. And you guys, you know, we'll figure that out on our own. So I would just say be careful. It starts small, you think you're doing the right thing, and the next thing you know, we're all even. So thank you.
Thanks. And Sarah. Okay. Kim Palmer. Yeah, we started your time way back there.
Yeah. I wish that you had by the time I'm done. Can you guys hear me out there? If not, I got copies of what I'm going to read here. Okay, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kim Palmer. My husband and I live on Flower Mill Road on the east side of Blanding, and many of the individuals discussed during the December 16th meeting are my neighbors. I am also a member of the Palmer Cow Family, which was mentioned in that meeting, and I've had several people comment to me, did you know? And I'm like, no, no. And I have a couple of several critical points to make, so please bear with me, and I'm a little bit nervous, but I'll do my best. First, I'm deeply disappointed by how that animal density discussion was handled. It became a platform for personal opinions, preferences, and even attacks, behavior that is just unacceptable to public servants. When names of individuals are brought into the conversation across the line of professionalism and ethics, instead of stopping this inappropriate behavior, it was allowed to continue, further violating the trust and dignity of those involved. This lack of respect and professionalism cannot go unaddressed. In 2016, we stood against the overreach of the federal government with the creation of the Bears' Monument, opposing the restriction of freedoms we had long enjoyed. Today, it seems we're facing a similar encroachment, not in a sweeping 1.9 million acre move, but through incremental changes to policies, laws, rules, and plans. These small steps chip away at our rights and freedoms, eroding them piece by piece. This isn't the freedom we stood for, and it isn't the San Juan County we love. So I have some specific things I think we can do to address those issues. One of them is to issue a formal public apology to those whose names, circumstances, and activities were inappropriately discussed during that meeting. This is a matter of decency and accountability. I also think that it would be appropriate for the resignation of the planning administrator for failing to act professionally, ethically, and with respect for the residents she serves. Personal attacks and bias have no place in her position. I also would like to see the resignation or removal of any planning commission member who no longer demonstrate their commitment to the county residents they have been appointed to serve. I'd like to see this whole document, scrap this overcomplicated and overreaching document, start over with a focus on our county's needs, culture, and freedoms. Keep it simple, open, and respectful of the people who live here. Lastly, stop letting personal dissatisfaction dictate policy. If someone is unhappy with their situation, they have three options: work with your neighbor to resolve it, file a nuisance claim, or just move. It's not the responsibility of the entire county to adjust for individual preferences. Let's be clear. One more sentence. Let's be clear, personal responsibility is the key. Change starts with the individual, not at the expense of the county and community as a whole. And I'll leave a copy of this, my thoughts, so that it gets in the minutes, as I set them, okay? Who would like that?
Okay. Absolutely. You got to raise your right hand.
My name's Colleen Tibbetts, and I live close to Moab. I have been a Moab resident since birth and now have residency in San Juan County. And as I watched and read through the minutes, what are you people doing? I come from over there, and it is not good. And what's happening with the animal out, but I'll tell you, comparing animals that we feed in our yards and in our corrals, and then doing, comparing that with AUMs, that's, that doesn't even make sense. And I just think that you guys should care for the farmers, the ranchers, people with private property, and really listen to them. I realize you guys were in a crunch, but you would want to keep people, you know, let them have their private property, let them do what they want. And there's laws and regulations, are there not laws and regulations that you can use? The health department, nuisance, the police, things of that nature, instead of burdening good citizens that, you know, pay their taxes and try to do the right thing, why burden them with the bad apples? Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our signup sheet list. So let's open it up to other public comment. Come on up.
My name's Kelsey Rose. I live in Blanding. I first off would like to thank the board for moving one of my family's properties back into agriculture category as we requested. Appreciate it, thank you. I have watched on YouTube several of these meetings and attended the November meeting. I realize that the Planning and Zoning Ordinance is a complex document, and the redesigning of it is a difficult process. One thing I don't like about the new order, well, there's a lot of things, but one of these that I just pinpointed was, the new ordinance, it does not permit gravel pits, and it goes with what Joy was saying, Joy Howell. Does not permit gravel pits and mining in the multi-use zones. Gravel pits are not only permitted in, gravel pits are only permitted in agriculture and industrial zones. Gravel is a necessary infrastructure, necessary materials that is becoming scarce. It should not be locked away and may be unstable and worthless in multi-use zone. Mining is the only allowed, mining is only allowed in, as a conditional use in agriculture and industrial zones. The multi-use zone has small tracts of land and very large tracts of land. All these tracts of land have mineral rights on them. Many of these mineral rights have been separated from the surface ownership of the land and put on deeds called mineral deeds, and passed down generation to generation for the ownership of the minerals of the land. Now the county, through the planning and zoning ordinances, it's saying no mining on multiple use land, eliminating the mining industry, makes these mineral rights worthless. Many of these, maybe they're worthless right now, but they might be quite valuable in the future. Maybe the surface owner doesn't own the mineral rights, but someone does, and some family LLCs does. My grandmother owns some of these mineral rights. Please don't take them and make them worthless, because we don't know what the future holds with what you find on your land. The multi-use zone is supposed to be consistent with the San Juan County's general plan. Some of the general, some of the general plan's provisions on page 24 of the ordinances are promoting prosperity, protecting tax base, fostering agriculture and other industries, providing fundamental fairness in land use and regulations, protecting property values. As the multi-use zone does not allow gravel pits and mining, then the multi-use zone is not consistent with the San Juan County's general plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
My name is Kelsey Backus, and we live in Spanish Valley, which is now kind of being known as Spanish Valley City. We have ran a riding center and horseback stable there for 25 years on property that has been in my family now for 150 years, running cows and horses, and my husband has raised hay on that property. With this new zoning, we've been changed into, from agricultural commercial, as, or into residential. So you can see what that's going to do to our property and my pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, in the fact that we do have a commercial industry, but we also have a homestead in which we provide beef, eggs, dairy, milk to our community for free. We do not charge for it. And so I do think that you guys in San Juan County should protect the ranchers that are left, and as farmers, no matter how small we are, because San Juan County is known for their agricultural industry, and we are one of the last farms standing on our little 30 acres with cows. We have been slowly encroached upon, slowly being pushed out, and when you guys list us as zoning now, it says potential community. I can tell you this, that land is not for sale. It will not be sold. It will be staying as agriculture as it is. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I can get there.
There you go.
Wow.
I had some red carpet.
It's like the Seattle freeway.
You may know my name because I've been writing to you and sending you information. I'm Susan Carter, and I live in a community, a neighborhood, that straddles the north San Juan County and Grand County. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about two things. First, the rezoning of sunny acres into multi-use, and then the proposed famous truck stop. I wrote to you, and I submitted research, I hope you all got it, and saw the health effects that the National Institute of Health, you can also look at the American Cancer Society, there's brand-new data out as of December. There's a lot of data showing a lot of harm, that putting a truck stop within 1,000 feet of people can cause to their lungs. It embeds into the lungs of children. It causes cancer. So I'm a little upset, and I hope you'll bear with me, because I haven't spoken public in a long, long time. I want you to know that we're discouraged. We don't feel that your process has been very transparent. A truck stop is now plunked in, and I apparently, from hearing things, you've combined uses to make this allowable. We're confused, we're discouraged. A lot of folks just feel like you're going to ram it down no matter what, and I want you to know that that's how it feels. A lot of people are giving up. But I came because I walked my whole neighborhood, I talked to everybody, and folks don't want it, not because we're not in our neighborhood. We get it that you need the revenue. We get it that there's a truck stop need along the highway, but that location is dangerous. It's dangerous to the traffic that goes through there. I saw a truck ram into a trailer hauling cattle just this weekend, right at my house as I was going into town. That highway is dangerous there. I know you're going to put it off to the DOT, you're going to slide a lot of this off to other people, but you do have the right to regulate what a truck stop looks like, what the setbacks should be, what the provision should be for emissions, for litter, for noise. We're right up against the canyon wall. It rattles at us and comes back. I get up at 5:00 in the morning, I hear the trucks when they're downshifting. It will be untenable. So who are we? This pain in the butt neighborhood? Well, I've been there for 17 years. Some folks have been there 25, 30 years. And we know that a lot of you have said buyer beware, we've heard you say it's your fault, you should have known, but could anybody have known that we were going to be zoned in this manner? You have a need to protect all of us, and not just think about the revenue. I can't speak to the second thing because you're limiting my time, which is the rezoning of my neighborhood. I will give you a picture of all of the taxpayers in good homes of varying values. This is a neighborhood, folks. These are people who know each other, love each other, care for each other, and you're going to take us down, and you're going to make us. You want new residential neighborhoods on farmland, but you're going to ruin ours. So read the letters that have been sent to you. We care.
Thank you. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who's next?
So my wife had to convince me not to bring the pitchfork and torch in, so by looking around the room, the parking lot, I think that's true for a lot of us, so. But I think the big thing is a lot of us are just, oh, Lane Palmer, and from north of Blanding, in the county there. And I just feel like a lot of us are just concerned, and there's probably a lot of ignorance, a lot of not knowing exactly what exactly is in this, and we're all for small government. And, you know, many of you are our friends, we know you, like, we feel like a lot of these restrictions are, like, would come from the federal government and big government that we don't know, that's far away, and we're just confused and concerned that it's coming from you guys, and we feel like we've trusted you guys, and it's like, why are these restrictions coming down from our own friends and family and neighbors and people that should get us the most? And so I find it very concerning when you look at, like, this table here that you're providing, the zoning and what's allowed and which zone and all this, that, and the other. Like, I talked to Curtis, and I was like, hey, like, this taxidermy, like, can you even do your business now? Like, this confuses me. And there's all these things that are like, you can't do this, you can't do this, and then you use language that says, any use listed not, is not, any use not listed is not allowed. And it feels like you're just putting this in this little box and going, you have to think like us and do your businesses like this? But when there's infinity ideas out there, because I'm constantly coming up with new ideas and stuff that I want to do on my property to have side schemes, and do I have to come to you and approve every little thing all the time? I feel like that's just very restrictive, and I feel like that's backwards way of thinking. It should be like, hey, go and do what you want, and if there's a problem, we'll address it, and we'll go case-by-case basis, and you should have the freedom to use your land the way you see fit, and then if there's a problem, we'll address it then, and give people, you know, their rights, and that should be the American way. Exactly, and so, and just like the gentleman said earlier, it's just one little thing after another, and it's just compiling, and you might feel like you're doing the right thing, but we're just concerned, one, because we don't actually understand everything that's in here, because we're busy, and we just want these restrictions to be less on us and to be written in a way that's like, hey, do what you want, not, if it's not listed here, if we haven't thought of it, then it's prohibited and you're screwed. And like, to us, that's, it's concerning, and so that's why I'm here, and I just want to address concerns for potential business ideas and just freedom in the American dream. So thank you.
Big point. Thanks, honey.
Name's Derek Frankham. I'm from Blanding. My wife and I are brand-new farm owners here in Monticello with intent to move and put our business here with a place to make money and feed our future children. And this conflicts our plans entirely. We have saved our money and fought tooth and nail to try and grow something that hard people, people, young people, are having a hard time doing right now. And San Juan County is one of the few places you can do that. But this conflicts that. If you want young people to be here to help grow this place, we got to help them, not fight them. I leave that with you.
Thanks, Derek.
Well, those of you that don't know, I'm Camehodamio, and they all know I'm the rebel in the county. So I have several...
you.
Well, those of you that don't know, I'm Cami Hata Mio. And they, they all know I'm the rebel in the county. So I have several concerns. You say you're scrapping the livestock thing. That's fine. But there is sections in other places that mention livestock that is limiting ponds, drainage, things. We need to encourage farmers and ranchers to have ponds, to do spreader dams, and things to, um, limit erosion. Now, several of these people that have spoken here today are my neighbors, um, the Pews, the Palmers, Monsons across the road, Holidays up there. We all have businesses. My brother up the road, we've had performance horse businesses for 65 years. And the way the zoning is, you're eliminating our multi-hundred thousand dollar a year businesses. This is, I mean, are you gonna compensate me for the $200,000 I'm gonna lose because I can't train performance horses? I mean, really? Come on, guys. And our zoning, mine, okay, here's a prime example. Mine is multi-use. Monsons across the road is agriculture. My brother's up the road is agriculture. Palmer's up the road is residential. Holidays up there, who knows? They might zone out their gravel pit. Because I didn't look at their zoning, but the, and bless your souls, you granted the RV park across the road, and that is the biggest eyesore in the county. I'm sorry. And this is my final thought. You cannot regulate pride. People have pride themselves, and you can't regulate what we're gonna do.
Hands up.
Travis Parson, uh, county resident. Um, when you say you're gonna scrap the animal use, can you explain that to me, what you mean by that?
We, we took that Section 11 completely out. It's, it's black line.
So it's not gonna be defaulted by a state, like, to any kinda restrictive animal use elsewhere?
Your default would be the nuisance ordinance.
And what does the nuisance ordinance say?
A neighbor can call you in if it smells or it's this or that.
On private property?
Was that, did that neighbor move in after the guy?
We can't get into debate, but that's, that's.
So that's why I, I, I don't want it scratched. I want it to say specific words that say, "We can have as many animals as we want. We can have things to, you know, supplement for our family." I've got five kids. I live on an acre and a half. If my kids need to move back and live in an RV, they should be able to. If they need to move back, I mean, today's world, can you afford a home? No, it's too expensive. You can't afford it in this county. You can't afford it in the state. Um, RVs might need to be a use for some of our children. And so that does need to be, and the nuisance law, I guess we need to address that, because if that's gonna become an issue about our animals, then we need to address that issue as well. Thanks.
My name is Hal Palmer. I live just north of Blanding. Um, so I don't know a whole lot about this new ordinance, but from what I've seen, it doesn't make sense for this county, especially in a property rights aspect and an economic development aspect. I own property north of Blanding, which is, uh, in the proposed multi-use zone. When I look at the use table, it appears that I can, that what I can do on my own land is very limited, which is against the American dream and my personal liberty. Let's say I would like to make food preparations, candy or butter, not permitted. Let's say I wanna make meat, grain, bakery, or beverage products, not permitted. What if my son wanted to have a metal fabrication business or a taxidermy business, not permitted? What if I wanted to open a kennel, not permitted? How about opening up a used car lot or sell equipment, not permitted? Those are just a few examples. Um, what if I wanted to do something that is on the use table, not permitted? Where can I even go in the county to do these things? Around Blanding, the only industrial zone is around the uranium mill. It's not likely I can go there. There's no highway commercial zone, no community commercial zone, no access, accessible industrial zone around Blanding, or even near to Blanding. In a county larger than some states, that doesn't make any sense. I thought I would reach out to our economic development manager and see what I need to do if I wanted to start a business that is not allowed in the multiple use zone. She said I would have to go, uh, within the Blanding city limits to do that. Well, I moved from Blanding city limits to the county, so I was free to do what I want. Now I would have to move back. I have a question for the planning zoning committee. Have you consulted with the economic development manager to see if this proposal aligns with the economic development goals? And I don't mean the, uh, development manager that was here previous, but the current one. Um, because I don't think the last one would have any stake in, uh, she wasn't invested in this county. Um, so I think that we should consult with our economic development manager, because right now, uh, you're making her job harder to accomplish. I think that we need to go back to where we don't have all these restrictions and regulations, which frankly, don't incentivize economic development. Why do we even need zones in the first place? Let's go back to a time when we didn't, we didn't even need a business license in this county. What's broken? Why try to fix something that was, wasn't broken? Is it because we're going rogue, as I've been told regarding the nightly rental business? It seems to me the county government is going rogue. Uh, the USA is largely successful, including our county, because people could do what they want without, uh, anyway, for this reason, um, I oppose this ordinance and hope that we can defeat it. Um, my wife wanted me to comment that, uh, you know, we have a community, and she loves her neighbors, and this might divide the, the community and the neighbors. So, thank you very much.
My name's Eric, Eric Grover. I live in Blanding. I've been asked to read a statement from Gail Johnson. The proposal, 2025 San Juan County Land Use Ordinance is an absurd, heavy-handed proposal, should not be adopted by the San Juan County Commission. There will be plenty of people that have already objected to specifics of the proposal. There is no need for her to, for me to repeat these. I am commenting on the failure of the county Planning Commission to do their job in representing the people of San Juan County, particularly the landowners in the unincorporated areas. This proposed ordinance is a product of personal agendas or ideologies of outside special interest groups. It is arbitrary and subjective. This planning commission seems to have an entitlementist attitude that they are smarter than us landowners. They do not understand that they work for these landowners. They are accountable to these landowners. This heavy-handed proposed ordinance shows the lack of respect this planning commission has for the landowner, and little regard for private property rights. This planning commission is promoting big, expensive, overreaching government. This planning commission has spent a great deal of time and effort putting together this document. They put little to no effort into being transparent to the public on what they are doing. The meetings were poorly attended because the commission only did the minimum legal requirements in notices meetings. A notice buried in the legal section of the San Juan record is not informative nor noticed by many. The postcard mailed out did not reach a lot of people. Neither the legal notice in the newspaper nor the postcard mentioned what this commission was up to. For this planning commission, truly wa, if this commission truly wanted people to come to their meetings and wanted people to give them input, then they would have had, put more effort into being transparent. This is proposed ordinance is a drastic change from the current ordinance. Newspaper articles, social media posts have been written explaining the changes to being proposed, and the reasons for these changes. Because people cannot be on top of doing things of every government agency, federal, city, city-state, school board. People have the trust, have trust in the government to do the right thing. Sadly, too often, government abuses that trust. We have this right here at our local level. This local planning commission, as citizens' board, has betrayed our trust. They cannot be trusted to do the right thing. They have assaulted our civil liberties and our private property rights. They have taken what power was given to them and began to exercise unrighteous dominion. They have failed to do their job to represent the people they work for. If any member of this planning commission who has actively participated, two more sentences, paragraph, "More expensive intrusive government should resign or be removed from the planning commission. Furthermore, the proposed ordinance should not be adopted by the county." My personal thoughts say, what's next? You've got us in the pot. You cranked us to boil. Now we're, now we're in uproar. What wool are you pulling over our eyes?
I'm Carrie Pugh. I live in north Blanding, and I just wanted to agree with what people have said about transparency. I'm really concerned about the fact that we have known little about this all occurring. Maybe it's because we have our head in the sand, but mostly it's because we have our head at work. And I want to ask you guys, who do you work for? You are whose servants right now when you did this commission? When you did the zoning commission? Who do you work for?
All of us.
I want you guys back here to raise your hand if any of these people talked to you about planning any of this. Raise your hand if you were visited. Fantastic. Three people in this room were visited. Exactly. You are our servants. We should have been talked to. We should have known this was coming down the pipe. We should have been heard of, as far as, where do you live? What do you need? What does your zoning need? I know some of those comments, I've been like, "Oh, we can do whatever we want." That's kind of hard to say. There, there are restrictions in life. We shouldn't harm our neighbors. But we should have the rights to do what we do within our property, within our piece of land. And we should have been consulted. How do you feel about this? What do you need? What is important to you? You are our servants. I don't know how you even got your positions, but you are our servants. This is we, the people, as he said. What we do on our property, for me and my husband, it is his livelihood. With what you have planned here, he loses his job. What I saw on social media, on the different things when people were discussing this, they said, "This is gonna help our county. This is gonna bring our county revenue. This man is gonna lose revenue. My husband is gonna lose revenue. My nephew is gonna lose revenue. My neighbors in this whole room are gonna lose revenue." Was that the plan when this was put together? Were we hoping, "Let's lose revenue for the people that currently live in San Juan County"? What was the purpose? We need transparency. We deserve transparency. We need to know who you talk to, how you determined, what was important, what mattered, what we're gonna do with our county. And I believe as these decisions are made before you're approving this, we deserve to know why this all came together. What was the purpose? What are your goals? How is this gonna help my life? How's this gonna help the lives of all the people in this room? Because we have a right to our homes, to our lives, to our livelihood. None of you want to find out, "Hey, I just rezoned things and your job is gone now." That is so cruel, is it not? That's all I want to say.
My name's Tyrell Kressler. Uh, I know a few of you up there, and I'm, I'm from Blanding. I've been in Blanding my whole life. But, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but you wanting to know our names and where we're from, can I ask each one of you where you're from originally? Is that appropriate?
We're not.
Because there's, there's not very, I mean, I don't know all of you. I only know two or three of you. So, I mean, do I, do all of you guys know everybody up here? So if, if, if you are representing the county, I feel like we have the right to know at least who you are and where you're from. Is that appropriate? I mean, I don't know, Ann, where are you from originally?
Originally, I'm.
Whoa, whoa, we're not gonna get into this. No.
It's, they're.
Hey, stop it.
We're volunteers.
From districts all over the county. This person here is from Spanish Valley. A person there is from left. So the whole county is represented. Any of you are welcome to put your name in for this position. They don't have to tell you where they're from and who they are.
If they're representing the people and in the county, I feel like it would be appropriate to know where you're from originally.
You're welcome. It's, it's posted online. You can see you're.
Okay, since, since that's not appropriate in this meeting, let me just ask you, why do each one of you live in San Juan County? And think about that as you go about this. And then as your nuisance ordinance, who's, I just wanna know, who's gonna police that? I mean, are you guys gonna police that or what? Who's gonna police that?
So we're bringing in a code enforcement officer. I'm not gonna get into a debate.
They're gonna raise our taxes to pay for somebody to police it.
That's wrong, Mark.
He is our county attorney, ma'am. Thank you. So finger three times, it's ticking.
My final comment is, is the person that's gonna police the nuisance ordinance, are they bulletproof? That's my final comment.
Michelle.
Michelle Baird from Monticello. I've been listening to all your comments and stuff like that, and it seems like there is just so much in the zoning and planning ordinance that is just not gonna work for this county, bottom line. I would suggest that maybe you all go back to the drawing boards and rewrite stuff and not even vote on this tonight. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
I just have a question.
I'm, I'm Shawna Shumway from Blanding. Um, I have several pieces of property surrounding Blanding, in Blanding. I know that you got rid of the animal ordinance, but my question is, is during the last meeting, listening to it, um, they wanted to give 28 days for these people to be able to get, to get out of their camp trailers. 28 days is what I heard on the thing. You had, you could be in it for 28 days. Anyways, whatever that is, where are these people gonna go? Where are you gonna send these people? There is no housing. There is, can you pay $1,500 a month rent? Apparently, these people cannot. They're living in camp trailers because they cannot afford the housing. And, or it's an Airbnb. So that, and I just wanna know, you know, you're gonna give them a timeframe to get out of these camp trailers. Where are they gonna go? Are they gonna be homeless? That's my question.
I've dodged you several times. Sorry.
It's kind of an honor to not be fast enough to the podium. Um, good evening. My name is Alicia Palmer, and I am here tonight to express my concerns about the proposed changes to the San Juan County ordinances. Um, firstly, I have many worries about the wording in the proposal, specifically about the words nuisance, manufacturing, and fabrication. Who determines what constitutes a nuisance? What bothers me may not bother someone else, and this definition can be very subjective, varying from person to person. Next, the dictionary defines manufacturing as the making of articles on a large scale using machinery. Again, the language is subjective. What determines the meaning of large scale? Does this prevent me from making products for myself, or from, uh, selling products to others? Finally, fabrication is defined as the action or process of manufacturing or inventing something. This suggests that I cannot make or invent items in my own home or on my own property. Like many people here, I am a hard-working American just trying to make a living. I work a regular nine-to-five, with a side hustle on the weekends, and manage a small farm. This proposal severe, severely limits my abilities and options to provide for myself and my family. My property is zoned as multiple use. According to the proposal, if it passes, I will not be able to make my own clothing or make clothing for others, manufacture beverages, fabricate a tiny home or any type of manufactured home, manufacture feed, which is contradicted later in the proposal, by the way, or manufacture meat or dairy. Over the years, I have acquired a dairy goat and chickens, manufacturing of meat and dairy. This proposal not only limits my business opportunities.
This proposal not only limits my business opportunities, but also limits my ability to feed my family. This proposal therefore threatens my life. Because of the many restrictions and the way it limits economical growth in the county, along with the ambiguous, ambiguous language, I am asking that the proposal be rescinded. Thank you.
Hello, how are you guys? I just wanted to speak quickly in my support of you, I've worked with you guys for a long time, about businesses and lot stuff and this and that, and I, I honestly believe you're, you're all coming from a place of the right intention. I do believe that. I think this, I think this zoning is wrong for a few reasons. I think the RV long-term deal, if you have kids or something like that, I agree with that. I have some family that is in California and may need to come out here and live for a few months while they kind of get on their feet. I, I kind of want to ask even informally if you guys will commit to making these businesses right, these existing businesses as you're doing these zoning things. For myself and for the other people here, I don't think the zoning going forward should change what they've been doing for years. And I just, I would like to hear you guys say that, that you'll work with us and, and help us continue those businesses. So, I think that's all I got, thank you.
So regarding these existing businesses, if the zone, zoning changes took place, whoever's in an existing business is a grandfathered use. That use can continue indefinitely, so that would never, ever change.
As long as.
It's not expanded.
It is currently legal, so if you are doing something illegal now, it doesn't, just all of a sudden become okay.
Don't forget your name. My name is Daniel Wright, I live over by Moab, but in San Juan. And some of these businesses go back to times when you would call, like me, I called down, said, hey, this is what I want to do, do I need a business license? He said, no, you're good. That's been acknowledged by many of you on this board many times. So how do you say that those people who called and were told they're good to go and then have been operating since then are illegal? Because that's what a lot of these, that's, that's the gray area that is kind of infecting a lot of this. And, and this zoning just makes it seem worse because it's, it's like you're trying to take it away before you're letting some of these people make it right. You know what I mean? And I, I think that's very important. I'm all for the increased economic, that's, I'm very much in support of more taxes coming in, more economic stuff happening. And anyway, but I, I think this is just a little too restrictive on some areas.
Thanks. Thanks, Dan.
Can I ask, can I ask a clerk, so you said that it's grandfathered in, but the way I read it, it's a non-conforming use, which is, which is different legally, so I just want to make sure, is it grandfathered or is it a non-conforming use?
It is a non-conforming use.
I wasn't going to say anything because I already talked to a couple of you. Sean Ivans, I live in Blanding, but I live all over the county, really. I had conversations and I feel like they went really well earlier today, and so I appreciate that. But we talked about, we talked about the animal density and the, and the stock ponds, stables, arenas, those kinds of things being, being expanded to all the different categories up there, especially the industrial. I think that's really important because there is a lot of agriculture in the county and, and if there's, we're already fighting for our lives as it is. We have a proclamation from the government that's really trying to shut a lot of us down, and so anything that has to do with agriculture needs to be expanded to, to the other zones, you know? Multi-use, it's a little more restricted than, than it should be. Agricultural, there are some things that aren't allowed in there that should be. There was one I was looking at. The, all the veterinary animal clinic, that should be expanded into industrial. Anyway, just please look at all those, and if there's any, any, if there's not any logical reason why it shouldn't be in the, in each of those zones, let's expand those and put a lot more peace up there. Okay?
Thanks, Sean.
My name's Rich Monson, I own Monsons Quality Meat Processing in Blanding. I've been a lifetime resident of San Juan County. My family have, have been educators in the, the county, have been ones that have worked in agriculture for years and years. As I look through this room, I see people who have given their lives to this county. I see people in a lot of different areas, and, and one thing that I want to be clear, because I'm a little confused on this because I have my business there, which I've gone through and seen, and, and, and my taxes have changed significantly since I put my business there and I'm okay, I'll pay my taxes, I'll do what I have to do. I also called when I set my business up and there was no business license necessary. Now I'm just looking at, I pay a business license fee every year and I'm okay with that too, because I want to follow the procedures and policies, I want to, to, to take care of my things, but we have to work together to keep these businesses here. Instead of putting restrictions, we need to find solutions. We need to find ways that if something is a nuisance, how do we take care of that nuisance? In the best way, not to shut the business down, but to help that business continue and, and maintain our livelihoods here in this county. We don't want to leave, we want to stay here forever. We want to be able to do the things that help us and that, that contribute to our, our, our county. As far as the housing goes, hearing a lot of people, it is a challenge. Since we put our business in, we sold our house in the city. We live in an RV right now and we do that, we have for a few years because that's our option. I can't build, I couldn't afford to build when COVID hit. I can't afford to build with these insurance, or not insurance, but, but the rates to finance a home, I'm 57 years old. I've got to save money to be able to build a home, that's my goal eventually, but I want to be able to do that and I want to have the money to take care of that. And if I look at a 30-year loan, that puts me at 90 years old. My son said, I've got to approve what you, what you build because I'm going to be paying for it when it's, when you die. And I've tried to, to, to think about that in planning this. I want to stay here forever, I want my business to be successful, I want my business to be able to contribute to this community, which I think it does, there's a lot of ranchers in here, and I know that I take care of some of, of their clients so that food goes on the table for people in our community. So please consider that. Another thing in education that I see, School Board President Lori, now County Commissioner here, as an educator, I have to be very, very careful always, what I say, how I say it, and the, the comments and things that I heard, I would counsel this group for the same thing. There's sometimes that we have our feelings and, and things that we want to say, but please always remember who you represent, please always remember how you talk about these folks, because we are San Juan County, thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Hello, Cheryl Bowers, and I'm a Blanding City Councilwoman and I live in Blanding, but I have property in the county. I just want to give you, first of all, thank you all for serving. It is a difficult job to be up there on that side, I get it, I've been there. And there's probably a lot that goes into this process that we don't here know. I hesitated to stand up because I don't know the full story of all of this and I don't want to, I want to make sure that I'm very informed before I make judgments or decisions, but I've heard a lot of good comments tonight that are interesting, but I want you to hear just a little bit from my perspective in Blanding City. We have people come, look to us to start a business, we want economic development. Gosh, our county is poor and we need it, we look to people to come to Blanding City and a lot of times they can go to the county and do it a lot easier. And I'm jealous of that, as the Blanding City Councilwoman. So we now are in the process of, of taking back some of our regulations that we thought were good at the time, but they make it very difficult for people to grow, to do business, to do things that they need to do on their property. So we're now trying to take back some of those things and you guys have actually taken your, some of these things in this, in your, in your ordinance, you've taken them further than what the city even does. And, and, man, I want all these businesses to move to Blanding, I would love that, honestly. But the farmers and ranchers can't do that, we don't have the land for them, San Juan County does. And San Juan County is a beautiful place, but I just want to caution you, having been in city council for nine years and having seen some things that we've done that have hurt us later, that we've had to then go back and try and change, be careful of that, make sure that you are as small as you can possibly be as a government entity. You want government to be small, you want the people to be free, you want their land to be free. And again, just thank you, so that's it.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Hi, I'm Lexi Dalton, I live in Spanish Valley. I have different concerns, it sounds like, than the majority of the group in here, but one thing I've heard tonight that seems to echo the same is a lot of people have talked about economic diversity, economic growth, that seems to be something that everybody wants in their community. So I think that theme kind of carries with my concerns that I have in Spanish Valley, even though it's a little different than agricultural concerns people have had here. I wrote a letter to the Planning Commission several months ago and I'm going to try my best to kind of summarize that as quickly as I can. I think that the current proposal has some significant flaws that require careful consideration. I don't believe that it's ready the way that it stands today. My main concern in Spanish Valley is about short-term rentals, especially in the multiple-use zone. I see that the way that it is now, they're just permitted across the board and I think that that is a recipe for disaster, especially for the integrity and cohesion of our neighborhoods, especially those that are already well-established where these multiple-use zones are being placed on these communities. Excuse me. I'm a staunch advocate for local business. I wholeheartedly support the county's efforts to cultivate a thriving business community in Spanish Valley. My husband and I are proud owners of a small business and that's a sentiment that's shared by many members of our extended family. I appreciate the county's expressed commitment to fostering local businesses, but I'm concerned that the current proposed zoning plans overlook the fundamental connection between housing affordability and the ability of new local entrepreneurs to establish themselves in our community without accessible and affordable housing options. I think that comes with opening up those nightly rentals across the board. I believe that unchecked expansion of short-term rentals can drive up property values and long-term rental rates, making it increasingly difficult for residents, especially the younger generations, to afford housing in their own community. My husband and I are raising small children right now, and so we're looking out for those, those younger generations that are coming in as well. I understand that there's a need for revenue in the county and acknowledge that increasing property values can provide a source of income through reassessed property taxes. However, it's crucial to recognize that the burden of these rising costs will disproportionately affect local residents rather than the second homeowners and transients who may view their properties as investments rather than their livelihood. The long-term sustainability and well-being of our community depends on this maintained balance between economic growth and preserving the affordability and accessibility of housing for local residents. The current proposed zoning plans as they stand will be detrimental to some of the last available somewhat affordable housing options for the workforce that's currently sustaining Moab by a thread. I know that Spanish Valley is not Moab, that's been kind of reiterated here tonight. But however, however, a lot of us are, are supporting Moab's economy and that's where the affordable housing currently is for us and I'm, I'm worried that this would change that and push those people out. So, that's all I've got, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment?
That was fun. My name is Connor Simmons, I'm married to Megan, we have four boys, we love the Spanish Valley, where we have multiple properties. My comments are geared to the multi-use zone in the Spanish Valley, so don't crucify me. I have followed this process for a year and a half, this is not new. As a business owner, I've had my hands tied for years. We want to grow in the right way, but we, but they keep telling us to wait for these changes. It's been over a year and a half of waiting. I've got loans I need to pay back, I need to put the money to work, but I can't. To those up front, thank you for your work, I don't know what was said in the December 16th meeting, but I've been working with Kristen and the commission for years and I've had nothing but great interactions, even if I don't always agree with the plans. Thank you for working for us. As a side note, seven of these folks are volunteers, they get nothing for working for us, so I invite you all to get involved, if you don't like what you see. I would like to see a change, it was just changed very recently, the use for RVs is against the nightly use, I guess for fire code, I would like to see that removed. I've spoken to several engineers that can't quite understand if people can sleep in them in campgrounds, why can't they sleep in them in elsewhere? So, so, population decline. A report from the University of Utah shows the state's population is changing from 3.8, to 3.8 million by 2030 and 5.4 million by 2060, growth is happening and we are having children here. Kristen told me in a previous meeting that we have a negative growth here and I wonder why. I think it's because our county's broke and so are our residents and we have a housing shortage. San Juan County, we have 20.7% of the population live below the poverty line, a number that is almost double of the national average. The largest demographic living in poverty are males 18 to 24. I don't blame them for leaving, San Juan has the highest poverty rate in the state. So I think the solutions are, the solutions are more space for business, which has been addressed in this current, current zoning map. Housing shortage, we need areas to build affordable housing, I think the multi-use zone does a great job of that, though it does affect the local residents. I feel like what we've been doing hasn't been working, this change is finally bringing needed changes. In conclusion, my heart hurts for those that are negatively impacted. It would stink to have a dream home get, get built around, but growth happens. The county map, as I've seen, is not only a step in the right direction, but it is a very well-developed plan that I've sat in multiple meetings over the last years and seen all the work you've done. This is, this has been going on for a long time and I think it provides opportunities for strong econ, economic growth and affordable housing. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to ask if we could wrap up, maybe three more in-house and then we'll look to online public comment. So.
I had a friend text me, she's watching on Facebook, she asked if the grandfathered businesses that are going to be grandfathered in, that would be eliminated. Otherwise, by the new zoning, if they pass to a new owner, like a son or a daughter, would that grandfather clause still stand?
Yes.
Yeah, well, well, I've got some notes for some follow-up here as soon as we launch into it.
Okay.
Are you guys making any decisions tonight?
We'll get to there. We got to follow the agenda.
Mainly how to get to our cars.
How about anybody in the hall?
There's one.
There we go.
From the hall.
From the hall.
From the hall. My name's Brittany Carlson, I was born and raised in Pleasant Grove, Utah. I moved here 18 years ago by accident to go to nursing school. And guess what, I'm still here. Because you, you want to know why? I lived these policies. I grew up in Utah County and people loved to turn their neighbors in. You're mean to my kid, I'll turn you in because you have two camp trailers. You have weeds, well, you have a Trump flag, I'm turning you in. It turns people against each other. I live here because someone has cancer. We all rally together. We raise money. We support each other. We, someone dies in a car accident, the whole community is there, and we're supporting each other. I can tell you that these zoning policies will turn everyone against each other. It becomes an obsession. People, it's payback. It's this, you were mean to me at the store, I'm going to turn you in. I'm, it's not going to be good. So I ask you to allow us to pursue the American dream, and don't let special interest groups and other outside influences get into your head, because one day you might be the one with cancer, and we won't be there for you. We have enough hate here. We don't need it in San Juan County.
Two more. Surely Dwayne's got to say something out there.
Can't find Dwayne anywhere.
Anybody?
I'm Colin.
No. Once he gets talking.
Could I add to my comment? I'm just curious. There's something that hasn't been touched, but.
Okay.
On the enclosed storage, I think with how you guys have it, how you guys read it is enclosed storage, um, or like the comics, all these stuff. But the next person might not read it that way. So the definitions need to be expanded because as agriculture, we need enclosed storage to, for our hair, for our brain, different things. So you need to think about expanding some definitions.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that was in a previous meeting with you guys. Let's look at our notes. All right, let's move to online. Stacy Hannah.
Hi, my question is concerning the cosmetic industry. What exactly are you regulating outside the county? I currently do nails. How is that going to impact me as a business?
So we can answer that question a little bit better when we jump into it, but we can't get into discussion at this point in time. But I will answer that question when we get there.
Is it going to make it to where I can't? What about the person that does hair next to me? Is she going to be able to do hers too?
Did you have a comment or just questions?
Well, I have a lot, but I would get in a lot of trouble, so I'm keeping my mouth shut on most of it. I just want to know how it's going to impact, in fact, impact my livelihood as a business that I just barely started a year ago, and I'm just now getting up off the ground.
Okay, we, we can talk about that once we close the public's, uh, hearing.
Okay.
Anybody else with their hand up? There's four of them.
Uh, Dave Ficardi. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Yep. Hey, uh, my question, well, my heartburn about the, uh, multiple-use overlay on Sunny Acres Lane is well documented in the public record. But, uh, reading through the, uh, the ordinances as they are, there's a lot of mention of the Appeal Authority. It states that the Land Use Authority is the Planning Commission, but I can't figure out who exactly the Appeal Authority is for appeals to zoning changes. And, uh, and if that is to be determined in the future, I'm kind of curious how that's going to work. That's it.
Okay, next.
Uh, Naomi Wilson.
Hi. Uh, Naomi Wilson from LaSalle, Utah. A quick question. I know the animal density has been dropped, but that part on page 13 about the kennels and the amount of animals allowed in the household, is that also being chunked with animal density?
Uh, not at the moment.
Okay. I, as under public comment, I feel like the amount of four needs to be moved up. Saying you can only have two dogs and two cats in your house, that's like a really small number. It should at least move to six, and I think it should move up to eight. If someone has more than eight, then yeah, it might be a bit much. But four is not many at all.
Okay, it's already on our list for tonight, Naomi. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Cara Marie. Cara Marie?
Cara, good job. Uh, my name is Cara Laws. I am living in Blanding. My husband owns about 60 acres out on Alkali, and I grew up on Flower Mill Road, and that is the road that was a big topic of conversation at the December meeting. Both my husband and my parents are traveling today, so I'm here representing them and, uh, making sure that their thoughts and concerns are heard as well. Uh, before I jump into all of that, I do want to say that we are grateful for this committee and anyone who serves on committees and in government roles. It is a thankless job. It's hard, and these are positions that do need to be filled. And many of us, most of us, don't have the capacity or the capability to be able to serve. So we are grateful that you are there and you are willing to participate in this committee. Uh, I'm also super proud of this meeting. This is exactly how government should work, is that the people can come and express their concerns in a public forum and actually be heard. That's a very big deal. However, I do agree with Kim Palmer that a public apology should be issued for the way that the board has spoken about their neighbors and their friends and the people that they thought, and, and people who thought that they mattered, that they cared. Uh, the things that were spoken about, uh, especially about Flower Mill Road, uh, was absolutely inappropriate, absolutely inappropriate. And I would also suggest the resignation of Cody Nielsen in, in addition to what Kim said. Uh, this is not how a public official should be speaking of San Juan County residents in such an openly and disrespectful way. Second, I feel this process has not been very transparent at all. I have a lot of background with government. I've written for the paper as, as a political journalist in these meetings consistently. And what was handed out and what was given to the public about what was happening was not transparent. We were given a 137-page document that's very confusing, has contradictory language in it, and the maps that were released don't even have labels. There's no street names. There's no marked landmarks. There are no notations on what pieces are being changed and what has already been there. It's very confusing for regular citizens who have not been in all of these meetings, who have not been micromanaging your every step, to understand what's changing and what's not actually changing. There's a lot of concern from the public because we do not feel like we have a clear picture. I would very much request that this whole process be 10 times more accessible to the general public. I'm also very concerned about the limits on businesses. Our businesses are struggling. Our businesses, even in town, our mainstream businesses on Monticello, they're struggling. And then to put more restrictions on our county businesses, there's already issues with the extreme county, uh, business license cost. And now we're also adding this, that's, that's, it's too much. Uh, and then finally, I'm concerned about the RV regulations. The RV regulations are more intense than the Blanding City Code regulations. Uh, according to the new code, I can't park my camp trailer out at my dad's property in the wintertime. He has 10 acres. Me putting my camp trailer next to him should absolutely not be an issue for anybody. Uh, my husband has 60 acres. We should be able to park our extra stuff out there in the wintertime, so it's not sitting in town. So it's out of the way, so it's not blocking roads that need to be plowed. Um, I'm very concerned that the committee is proposing. I, I got like.
Carrie Kelly.
Uh, thank you. Hi, I'm Carrie Kelly. I'm a homeowner in Pack Creek, and thank you all for your service. Um, I agree with many of the previous commenters that this is not ready to go to the county commissioner. Uh, for example, the notification was insufficient as to many of the comments about transparency. The county is required to provide notice to each property owner whose land is directly affected by the change, including the details of that zoning change, what the previous one is and what the proposed new zoning is. I only received a card, a postcard that told me there was a zoning change. And then, as Cara said, it points you to some maps, and a reasonable person cannot figure out what, what has changed. You need a magnifying glass. Furthermore, the maps have no labels on them. So it's just impossible to figure out what's going on. I sent several messages, and I only found out this morning. I got a confirmation that the, that the change in my zoning was to recreational support. So this doesn't meet the notification requirements. My third comment is that Pack Creek is vast majority residential. It is not vast majority overnight rentals. There seems to be some misunderstanding from some comments I've heard. And I want to request that you put Pack Creek back as residential, as in a previous map, and allow that one signal, single subdivision with its 10 residential, or sorry, 10 overnight rental properties to be grandfathered in. Or alternatively, to take that one subdivision and zone that single subdivision residential support. Not change, not upzone all of the other residential zoned property, or sorry, the other properties that are primarily used for residential uses. And my reason for this request is to maintain consistency with the existing use of the majority of the properties, those 34 properties, and to be consistent with the existing covenants on those properties. Thank you.
So Carrie, we can talk later, but you're actually in multi-use right now, under 2011.
Okay, thank you. That went, yeah, so that was also not clear to me. But the, the use and the covenants of those 34 properties restrict them to residential with no overnight rentals. So my request is to make this consistent with the covenants of those properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, when I first was talking, I, I was gonna say this, and then I forgot about it. But so like Monday, I wound up getting a cough and congestion. And, uh, you know, of course, you always think it's going to go away the next day. And I lost my voice. And it seems like that we all feel that we've lost our voice. And so, you know, we want to know that we, we hear you. Uh, we've been doing this for a long time. You're sure welcome to come out anytime. It's, it's not an enjoyable thing that we try to do, but, but we, we appreciate everybody's comments tonight. And, and again, I, I did apologize for the planning commission. So I, I did say that once, and, and I'm going to say it again for our actions that are inappropriate. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to come out of public. Motion. Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and second to come out of the public hearing for the land use development ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. I know you're all going to be sad to hear this, but the meteor, 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 let me look at it. Meteorological tower missed his flight and has been asked to be bumped to the next meeting. Um, and so we are on to five.
Okay.
Um, I would like to bring about a couple of points of heartache, it sounds like. So this is in no particular order because the page was getting busy. Um, I really would like to invite people to look at what our existing ordinance is. Let me pull that up for you. If you go to San Juan County, I know there's a lot of stuff on here right now because we've tried to publish everything we got. And you go to planning and zoning. Over here under planning documents, this is all our old stuff. And right here at the very bottom is the old zoning ordinance, which we're all under right now. Um, but I'd like you to look at this. This was done in 2011, and it's missing a lot of pieces. Um, this, when we look at this, it's very restrictive. It has had no enforcement. So now we're putting in a zoning ordinance that we hope is way less restrictive with enforcement. Um, but I would invite all of you, please go home and look at this, um, especially down here under your uses. Page 38, I'll just show you a little sample set. Um, this is where, I can zoom in too, don't panic. So this is where the uses are listed as either permitted or conditional, very similar to the table we've done. But if it is not on this list, it's illegal. So we have had a ton of illegal uses out there that with this new ordinance, we looked at what was going on in a very organic way, and we want to make it legal to do that. We're not after anybody's business. Um, I was really saddened by the way the last 48 hours was gone because when we started this journey, our intent was more property rights, more economic opportunity, more ability for people to find housing. And there is no one up here on this panel that would argue those were our tried and true goals. And I think you guys need to really look into it, compare it to the old, and then look through the new. Um, our use table now, I think there's 28 uses on here, 23. So if you're not one of 23 uses, you're not permitted. And now our use table is about 160.
How are you going to do the enforcement as other ones?
So, so this brings me to my next question, the non-conforming. If what you do right now is currently legal, and you can prove that, you get to come in and out of non-conforming. The flip side of this is there's been a lot of people do things illegal that we've decided, eh, it looks okay, let's make it permitted. You also come in. Um, there's been some vocabulary issues. Permitted means it is allowed. You get to do it. Go get a building permit and build. Uh, conditional means, hey, we got a few things we want to check in on. So when you see that C, you'll notice how many Cs there are on this old list compared to the new list. When there's a C, we're concerned about health, safety, and welfare. Okay, so if somebody's putting in a fertilizer plant next to residential zone, we kind of want to see what that's going to look like, right? So conditional uses are allowed, but we might have some extra steps for you, like some buffer zones. Um, the Loves Truck Stop is one of those. Like, we want to see what does it look like? We have a few extra concessions. So when we look at that non-conforming, if you come in as non-conforming, you can show that you tried to be legal, or you've got some vestiture, right? You've been paying taxes on it if you're doing short-term rental or that. That non-conforming follows the property. So if you sell it, you can sell it as non-conforming. If you hand it down to your family, you can hand it down as non-conforming. But you have to keep doing that use. So if you're using it for overnight rental ranch retreat, if you stop doing that for more than a year, you lose your vestiture. And the reason why we want to, if you're doing it, we don't want to ding you because you've been doing it. We don't want to shut you down. But we would like that to go back eventually into our ideal situation of zoning. And Spanish Valley, Mount Pill, has a big problem with this. Half of Mount Pill is overnight rentals in this, what used to be a nice neighborhood. While we're zoning it as residential, those overnight rentals will come in as non-conforming. We're not shutting you down. You can still do it. But at some point, if you don't want to do that, we want that to go back in the housing market, help bring that housing cost down. Um, next on the list.
Do you take people's property away from them for not?
No, we don't do that. We don't take your goats either. I don't want your goats. Um, taxes.
The non-conforming though, that if you are, if you, if your zoning gets changed and you are now non-conforming, you cannot, you cannot get a building permit to add unto.
Yeah.
You cannot add square footage to your unit. You can't do anything other than what it was the day your zoning changed.
Thank you, Lloyd. So let's say I have four overnight cabins out back. It's going well. I want to add eight. I couldn't because I'm in a non-conforming property. So taxes came up. We don't do taxes. That's the assessor's office. But just know that taxes are always changing. There's lots of different categories. If you, if your property is in a primary residence category, you get a huge tax break on that. But if you start doing secondary and commercial, then you have to pay the full taxes. I think it's like a 40% exemption or something. It's huge cut for your primary residence. But that's not us. If you have questions about your taxes, you need to call the assessor's office. We don't, zoning has nothing to do with that. Home-based businesses versus commercial. A lot of what you see on, let me get. A lot of what you see on these tables, this is in a commercial application unless noted otherwise. So when she's saying, hey, I can't bake cupcakes anymore and sell them at the farmer's market, that counts as a home-based business. And we do not regulate home-based businesses. Cottage industry, all that, it's allowed. It's home-based business, we don't touch it. Now let's say cupcakes are going really well. And all of a sudden she wants to put out a shop next door, right? Now you've kicked over into a commercial building. It has its own building, its own space. The public is coming to buy your cupcakes. So that's kind of the difference between home-based versus a commercial space. But when we look at, you know, some of, some of those things with bakery and confectionery and dairies, you know, if you've got a cow out back that you're milking for your family, that's not a dairy. We're talking about hundreds of cows going through a milking machine twice a day. So as you go through this list, keep that commercial set in your mind. Most of the questions I heard tonight on you're gonna shut down my business, almost all of you sounded like you're a home-based business. You do it within your house. I've got one myself, right? My little farmer's market, I do it in my house. And it's called cottage industry. Okay? So those are all protected until you expand out and all of a sudden you have a public building.
Or until it becomes a nuisance to your neighbor.
Could be. And it depends on what home-based business you're doing. If you're running a paint shop out back and they've got a playground next door, that might be a nuisance. So home.
Grandfather didn't though?
Home-based has to take place within the home. You cannot have a shop out back. You cannot have a beauty salon in the shed out in the, it has to be within the home. Because as soon as you extract that out of the home, it's now a public space. And so it falls under building codes and blah, 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 blah outside of the residence. Okay? So those are some of your trigger points to stay one side of the fence. Or if you're gonna go for it, you really gotta go for it.
Okay, so I'm starting into doing bees. I'm not gonna keep bees in my house to call it a home-based thing. Bees have to be out there, but the honey would be done in the house.
I also have bees. I've had up to six hives. I don't think I was an apiary yet. Right? I'm not, not making swarms to sell off.
Twenty-five from the state of Utah under license.
Yeah. So just, just kind of keep that in mind. I can't get into too much debate. Do you have a very particular question?
So you're talking about some things that I'm navigating through in cottage food things. And then wanting to grow my business on my property. So if I sell sourdough bread and then I want to expand so that I, right now with the cottage food love, I could sell to anyone in my community.
Yep.
Buyer beware, you can buy my bread and take the rest of buying my bread. And if I'm not in an inspected kitchen, if I want to sell outside of that, there's all kinds of more rules.
There is.
Commercial kitchen, I have to have all these inspectable things. I want to do that on my property. So you're saying it's not an option for me?
And that's not enough. That's a state of Utah health department.
Right, but as far as zoning, if I wanted to have.
Do, if you keep it in your home.
But if I, I'm asking if.
When is our private property considered our home?
It's, as soon as you extract out of the walls of your home, let's say I got a mechanic shop out back. That counts as a separate, it counts as a separate building.
Even though the public's not coming to it, I'm just, I'm, I'm satisfying the requirements of an inspectable kitchen, but I'm not, I'm not a restaurant. I'm not having people come to my home. I'm just.
I think you're okay. You might have to get buildings or health inspections every year.
That's a given, I understand that. But I just, I don't want to be outside of like being able to put something. My goal is to be on my property and on my farm.
Yep.
To work and do my business on my farm, not to have to go get some building in town to work out of, just to be able to build a business.
Yeah, nope. You'd be under cottage, cottage industry.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Sure.
So my preference horse business, I sell horses across the United States. But I am federally licensed, state licensed, and have an LLC. Do I need a commercial life? That makes me a commercial business?
Uh, you know.
It's not in my home. My office is in my home, but my business is outside.
Yours is tricky. I'd have to ask. I'd have to ask.
I have a question. What started this process? Were you guys writing it like you did?
That's a good question. I'm gonna take one more ho- home cottage industry question back here.
I know people love themselves, but who have a building that they put up, they live in a portion of that building and the rest of the building is their business. Is that counts as a cottage-based business?
Yep. Yep. You can live in half of it, have the garage in the other half.
And then twenty, twenty, twenty foot corner of it is their home. The rest is their business, that's also a cottage-based business.
Yeah.
Kristin, let's try and avoid specific questions.
Okay, correct. All right.
Yeah, let's, let's get into the number five.
So, um, jumping into how this came about, and Mitch, I might let you take it from here. Why are we even talking about this?
Well, I think there's a lot of disinformation and a lot of uninformed people here. And it's good to see all of you here. First, no, that these people come here once a month. Usually, a lot of times, the meetings go to 11, 12 o'clock at night. They put in.
Locking the mic, bitch. You don't mind?
They put in a lot of time and effort. In between meetings, they, they, they have these packets that are probably three, 400 pages long that they have to read through. The history of the, our zoning ordinance is in 1978, I think San Juan County passed its first zoning ordinance. All of you probably don't know anything about that ordinance. It stayed in place until 2011 when Kristin showed you the 2011 zoning ordinance. If a zoning ordinance is more than two years old, it's out of date. We haven't updated our zoning ordinance since 2011. If you look at that zoning ordinance, it's a mess. It contradicts itself. It has uses that are not defined well, that contradict each other, definitions that are not defined well, that contradict each other. And as a result of that, we get killed. We're in a half dozen lawsuits. Okay? Now, on top of that, in 2019, we tried to, not we, but prior administrations tried to pass an ordinance for Spanish Valley. Unfortunately, because of the political climate at that time, that, the draft of that ordinance was passed by the commissioners. And that ordinance makes the 2011 ordinance look like a marvelous work and wonder. Because the, the Spanish Valley ordinance that, that we have right now, that tries to regulate things in Spanish Valley, specifically overnight rentals, where, again, we're involved in a lot of lawsuits. Now, some of you say we don't want government in our lives. We understand that. We want you guys, farmers and ranchers, to succeed. We understand that you're the backbone of this county. And we want you to be successful. And in order to do that, there has to be some regulation.
You know, your actions though are speaking opposite of that.
Let me finish. You know, some of you farmers, you say you don't want regulation. But if a truck stop came in right next to you and 80 trucks were passing by your house or your farm each day, you'd be running up here, asking the county to do something to regulate that. So there has to be regulation. Every county, every city in the United States has regulation. And so there's two, two parts to this that I see tonight. One is the zoning map. Now, how did that come about? That's where we've designated, or they have designated what areas in the county, what the zone should be. And that's a work in progress. It's not perfect. We'll, we'll admit that. But it's a starting point. And it's far and above better than what we have right now with the 2011 ordinance and all its problems. So we're trying to make things better. I know the attitude of this commission for people that are out of compliance, people that think they can go and just tap into the utilities, existing utilities without getting any permits, without getting any inspections, they tear up the roads, put sewer lines, water lines in. We have those, those kind of issues in this county.
Yeah, I got a question on that.
We're, no, no, this is not.
We can't do any public comments right now. The public hearing is closed, I'm sorry. But you may email me your comments after, and I will forward them on.
So again, we're trying to make this county, we're not trying to restrict you. We're not trying to retard your business. We want you to be successful. So back to the, what I was saying, you have the issue of the zoning map. That determines which zone you're in. The, the zone you're in determines what uses you can have. Now that can always be changed. You can come in and ask for a zoning change. Okay? So that's an option for you. The second part of it is the ordinance itself. That ordinance started a year ago. And this commission started working on that ordinance a year ago. We've complied with all of the public notice laws that we are required to follow as far as transparency. And it sounds to me like most of you are having more issues with the zoning map than you are the actual zoning ordinance. But again, that is a work in progress. I think irregardless of what happens, if it gets passed tonight, if it doesn't get passed tonight, it is going to be worked on for the next year with multiple changes in it. All so that we can make this place better and more regulated. So that you buy a brand-new house and some guy owns 40 acres next to you and decides to put in a feeding operation or a gravel pit, and you have cars and trucks and stink and waste. Like I say, then you'd be coming to us wanting to do something.
But did he build the house right next to that ranch or property?
Well. That's, that's the whole purpose of the zoning ordinance. It works. Otherwise, every city and county in the United States wouldn't be doing it. And I have never, as a, as an attorney, on some of these issues that get brought before this commission, my attitude is let's send them, send them a notice of violation and tell them that they have to remedy the situation. Otherwise, we're gonna red flag them. And the attitude of this commission and Kristin Bushnell is no, we want to work with them. We, like I say, I have people, this particular person that tapped into the sewer lines, the utility lines, dug up roads without inspections, without anything. I wanted to shut them down. And Kristin said, no, I want to make them, I want to help them get compliant. So we're not trying to restrict you. We're not trying to make you unsuccessful. We're trying to be partners with you because we all live here in San Juan County. We love it. It's the poorest county in the state, has been for 50, 60 years after the uranium boom. It's the largest county in the state, just about all of the United States. It has roads, which is a big issue and part of the reason why it needs zoning. Because people want these roads, they built these roads or developments, and then the rains come in or the snow comes and they want the road pushed. We don't have the money to do that. So there has to be regulation to, to help the county manage everything that it has on its plate.
Thank you, Mitch.
Okay.
And I think with that, this is a huge jump. Now, it's not as big of a jump going from 78 to 2011, but I don't think anybody's really followed that anyways. So this is a huge jump. We're making up 15 years of what should have been reevaluated every year. Our plan, as written in here, is to reevaluate it every year. So you can bring us your comments, concerns. The best way to get your comments and concerns through is to email me. So I have something written down, timestamped, here's the day they sent it. I can forward that onto our planning commission. I can forward it onto our commissioners. And I will guarantee you, I will send you a receipt so you know it got there.
Can you say your name again?
Kristin Bushnell. All of our email addresses just changed, so I think they'll still get there. But we are looking to reevaluate this every year, October, November, and then adopt it December, whatever the changes are, every year. So if you have qualms, let's give this a try. If you have some qualms, email me in July and be like, I want to be on the list to be talked about. Like this isn't working.
What's your email?
K Bushnell at sanjuancounty.gov. I'm right here.
San Juan County, Utah.
San Juan County, UT.gov.
Utah.
I thought it was just UT. Yeah, if you go to planning and zoning. Um, the other thing is, of course, I felt a little personally attacked over the last 24 hours. I've had three people call me today and they're on my list of things to discuss. When I see all of you in here, I'm just really sad. Like, call me up. We've got a lot of people who have called me up and guess what? They got what they wanted. Because it works for us, it works for them, well, of course, we would do that. And I'm just really disappointed that this turned into a mad mob on Facebook and a petition instead of just giving me a call. Just give me a call.
The petition was on because of what was said to the people on.
Okay. So in the future, as we move forward, we're very workable. Pretty much every comment that's come through, we've at least considered. We might not have granted it, but we at least talked about it and considered it. So communication needs to go both ways. We've had community workshops. We've had it posted at clinics, at post offices. We've sent you each a postcard. If you're not getting your postcard, your address is wrong on your tax rolls. You need to get that fixed. It's been on Facebook, it's been on our webpage.
Somebody mentioned earlier, stop by and visit some of us. I teach school all day and then I go and work till two in the morning sometimes. Stop by once in a while and talk to us.
Dude, I'm right there with you, but I'm working 16s right now every day. So as soon as we can get some more help around here.
I've also got a response to that too. Most of us on this board, we're volunteers. We, I, I run three businesses. I volunteer for the service district in Spanish Valley for the board there. I've been on this board, I think, for over 12 years. I volunteer for the fire department. I have a son in high school wrestling that I'm missing right now. I mean, so for me to go out and go door-to-door and say, hey, you guys need to show up. There, there's a lot of people I know in Spanish Valley can't, one, that I, you know, reached out. Jim Nyland, you guys need to get here, need to come. that I, you know, reached out. Jim Nylan, you guys need to get here. Need to come in. Need to make your voices be heard.
You wanted us here, but then you're telling us you're disappointed that we're here?
No.
That's not what I'm disappointed in. We want people here. Our.
And it's not we.
Okay, I'm not getting into it.
Personally, I, I've lived in Spanish Va- Valley my entire life. I grew up in San Juan County. I mean, it just, I've been a part of this. Kelly Pearson came and asked me to be on this board, because nobody wanted to be on this board twelve, thirteen years ago. I've been here ever since. Same with the service district. Nobody wanted to be on these boards. We come in and we try to uphold our state laws and be here for the people. And the only time we ever get to hear from anybody is when they're mad at us for what we've done. We need you guys to be, I mean, I, I, one, once a month, I come here to do this for everybody. So I, I need everybody else to come, too, not just come when you get mad at us. I mean, because if we could start all this from the beginning with everybody's input in, in the beginning, we, we could have, this would have been a smooth process. But at this point, it's now, we've worked through this, and everybody's just mad at us for what we've done. You know, there's a lot of things on here I don't agree with, one hundred percent. There's certain areas that I don't know enough about, LaSalle, Monticello, Blanding. I don't, I try not to weigh into that too much, because I don't know anything about those areas. So I, we just need a lot more input as we go through this stuff. I mean, we're here every month for, since.
Hours.
Well, your attorney and you guys pretty much answered why this all started, because of lawsuits, right?
It's just a mess. It's been, it's just a mess. It's very confusing. People don't know where they stand. I have people call me all the time. I'm looking at buying a lot. What are my restrictions on the lot? A guy today couldn't figure out the fence. You know, our new ordinance kind of painted a pretty clear picture, like, here's your fence on a corner lot. You know, you can obstruct the stop sign. He was like, okay, I think I can make that work. Um, the other thing we're dealing with in this complex cog is we've got state mandates that we have to work with. We've got protected infrastructure, things like gravel pits. And so, there are other things that we cannot do because they're determined by international building code from the state of Utah, or fire code, or, so we can do what we can, and I think we have done the furthest extent of what we can. But you need to understand that there are some things, there's some codes that have been put in place outside of this commission that are for life safety, or whatever reason, right? And those need to be upheld. We don't have any jurisdiction on, say, the building code. That's not us. Okay, fire code, that's not us. Gravel pits, protected, they're protected resource. We have to approve them. So like, I know a lot of people are getting kind of fussy over a few things, but you have to understand, some things are out of our hands. We literally can't, we cannot make that request, because it would be in violation of state law and state code. So know that we've thought about this a lot, and actually, this ordinance has been years in the process. Uh, you know, a lot of people asked me if I was going to show up tonight. The last guy didn't, a couple of years ago. And that's why I showed up tonight, so I can get it done. So, we are not going to be bullied into stalling out. It's a big jump. It's going to be a big jump for all of us. Um, it's a big jump for us as staff. It's basically been a free-for-all out there. And so those are the reasons why the need.
You know, bully and mob, it's inappropriate, as was your commentary.
Okay, we're not doing that.
So, the need for this ordinance is very critical. It was needed years ago. We're behind the times already on even just making what's happening out there legal and compliant. And so that's what we're really trying to do, is we looked, we worked great with the economic development department. They helped us identify businesses all over, who's doing what, where, how can we get them compliant? Um, I've worked with the recorders a lot. I've worked with the surveyors a lot. I've worked with the roads department a lot. You know, what do you need? What have we been missing? So, the original draft of this, when I came on in December, we started working on it February, March, was done by all of staff. That was recorders, surveyors, roads, fire marshal, building inspection. We passed it through all of our specialties, and they weighed in on it. Then we hired a private consultant to give it a look. They also did all of our zoning maps for us. Um, they also hosted two of the work sessions that we had. That one kind of fell through. We didn't get it done on time. We said we needed to go back to the drawing table, so we did. The last six months, we've been back in the drawing table with, um, a high legal authority with the state. He's been working as a consultant to make sure everything's compliant with state code. Him and I have been working on it for six months. It's come back to these guys. Okay, here's the changes that were made. We had a public meeting in LaSalle. Um, so we've had, I can't remember, it's up to like twelve workshops, um, three public meetings, one practice swing hearing, two real practice hearings. But for people to say, gosh, I didn't know, you gotta meet us in the middle somewhere. I cannot find you in the woods if you do not have the right address on your tax roll. So meet us in the middle somewhere. We've tried to reach out. The animal density stuff, we sent it to the Cattlemen's Association. I sent it to USU Rangeland Specialists. We sent it to Sitla Rangeland Specialists. We're like, hey, what do you think? Okay, so, it's not that we haven't attempted to engage, but we need to engage more often so that we can brainstorm it with you rather than try to fumble through it at the end like we are right now. And with that, I would like to go into some of our changes. So, uh, I took change requests right up until five fifteen today, so if you were after that, you didn't make it. I'm sorry. All right, map updates. We got a couple of them. The Decker Ranch area, this one's Cassie Rose and Evan Rose. Um, they want to remain zoned as ag because there's a lack of opportunity to develop this area other than gravel. Do we agree with that? Hold on, let me get to my right page. And what I think we'll do is just a general agreement, unless anybody has any big things to say. Okay? The other map update I have from today, Sean Ivans would like their parcel across from the landfill there on the south edge of White Mesa to remain in agriculture, same reason, opportunity for a gravel pit.
Is it proposed MU right now?
It is multi-use right now. Okay. Uh, use table, we got a few of them. Uh, the first thing that was added, this was an admin add, just to help with some clarity. Right up here in the corner, we needed to add, as per legal advice, the language that any combination of a permitted use is a permitted use. So if you're doing a bakery and a confectionery at the same time, both of those are permitted, you can do both.
Why did we have to add that? What did you just say?
I missed adding it earlier. It should have been in there.
But why?
Basically, any use that you put together, different uses that you put together, if they're all permitted, it is permitted. So we're not playing the mul- the multi-development game.
Can you give me a scenario?
I just did bakery and the confectionery.
But they're both already permitted.
Oh, okay. How about a barber shop that also has a retail shop out front? She's selling salon supplies. Both of those uses would be permitted. As, as we're going through.
redundant.
For what?
Well, seeing, seeing that one's non-permissible and one's permissible, if you're doing both, they're both permissible. Under one, is that what you're saying?
So you can, you can jump zones.
No, no.
No, so you've got, you've got your business, you've got a permissible business here. You're doing a secondary that's non-permissible because this one's permissible.
Permissible and permissible.
Both permissible.
Both permissible.
All right, hold on, I got another one. I got another one. Let's do stables, barns, arenas, and a stock pond. They're all permitted, so you can put them together.
Why would you even, so if they're both permitted, why, what's, why would you not be able to put them together without that language?
Because this gets us in trouble when people are doing multi-use developments. Because they're saying, well, is it a restaurant? Or is it a skate rink?
Okay, I'll sit on that one, for the sake of time.
If it's permitted, it's permitted.
Well, yeah, I'm with Anna now. I thought you were saying that if, if, if one was not permitted and one was permitted, they'd both be permitted. Okay, then, yeah.
You gotta be all P's to put your P's together.
Yeah, I'm with Anna on that one.
Right, so if it's already.
If they're permitted, they're permitted.
He, he suggested we put it in.
Who, lawyer?
Bart.
Bart?
Yeah. Uh, dwelling as a temporary RV.
Can I ask a question?
Go for it.
Is there a reason why we don't have a strike through on the animal density in here?
Because it was within time.
But.
So I had to publish this at forty-eight hours.
Okay, but that's going to come out of the use table.
Yep, yeah. It's on my list over here. We'll get to it. Okay, use table updates, dwelling as a temporary RV. We wanted added to community commercial. It is in community commercial.
It's all the way across the board.
Okay, that one's already done.
I think we need to talk about that one, long-term use.
Let's, let's visit it after we, because that's a bigger discussion. Let's visit it after these simple updates.
Okay.
Okay, camp parks, resorts, and glamping. Um, it was suggested to add to the community commercial zone because there's a lot of this in LaSalle.
So, just to make a point.
So it's right there.
The difficulty with doing a sweeping one ordinance for the whole county is that, yes, that's great for LaSalle, but it does not really work for Spanish Valley. And as a Spanish Valley person, I have to make, throw that out there.
I think, I think it does work for Spanish Valley.
Okay.
We have Main Street, you've got a little camp park right there center that you can walk to down to the ice cream shop.
If the plan for Spanish Valley in community commercial, where if you look at the map where community commercial is, it's on either side of Spanish Valley Drive. Sitla wants to turn that area into, with their land, Main Street downtown.
Hopefully downtown.
So, we want a contiguous kind of zoning for the current private properties there. Is it, are camp parks the same, is it in harmony with what the Sitla plan looks like? Is my question. And I know.
I don't know how long it's going to be before Sitla gets a move on it.
Okay, and considering that we're going to keep revisiting this.
We, probably what's going to happen in Spanish Valley is, is all the privates going to build out first, and then the Sitla will build out. And so at that point in time, they might have to tailor a little more to what's already there. Now, of course, we're working with them. We have a grand master plan in mind, but they're not moving very fast on things. And we've got development that wants to come in.
Okay, as long as it's conditional, I think I could, I think we can work with that.
Okay, there was some clarification again on the commercial side of things for energy production. We are not talking about solar panels on your roof. Go for it. This is commercial energy production, so I just updated that with the word "commercial." Uh, solar panels are on you guys, get a building permit. Uh, okay, that takes care of... Wait, hold on, I want to come back over here. These are last-ditch effort comments that came at four forty-five. Um, use table, would like to add animal grazing to industrial. Um, a lot of our mining ground that is zoned as industrial, they've taken in a huge swath of it for future expansion, but they're not using it all right now. I think it's a mistake to take it out of industrial because one day that mine's going to expand. But we would like to add animal grazing to industrials that these large swaths of mining land can u- use it for something while they're waiting for the mine to expand. Um, so that would be under grazing. And we're going to have to rewrite this. It would basically be grazing is what it's going to turn into, instead of type one, two, and three.
Which should be in recreational support, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so grazing in both recreational support and industrial? Okay, and that's going to be as permitted? All right, would like to add.
What about the one lady that commented that it was in, uh, community commercial in Span- your community commercial, right?
Yeah, we, we're actually listed now as residential, and we ran a farm as agriculture and, and commercial agriculture.
I believe we were talking about you when you were talking, and I, I thought the map looked like you were community commercial.
I think you're in multi.
Let's take a look.
Okay.
Yeah, let's change that for them.
Were you? I think because we can call upon members of the public, why don't you come on up and let's see what you got? No, up here, closer. All right, where are you at?
Actually, you're in two. You're in, you're in community commercial and you are in.
We're not, though. It's listing this as residential right here, so this is our two acre, two and a half acres, and this is our farm that's cut out into here.
What if we just chunky into?
Agriculture, that's what we've always been.
Okay, next door to a gravel pit.
Next door to gravel pit.
Can you show us on the map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you would rather just change to A1 than?
I want to stay agriculture.
Okay, absolutely.
And you guys have enough land that it's not a?
Well, we have thirty acres. That's the problem. If you guys do that, forty continues to be pasture.
Well, and she's adjoining, adjoining some already ag.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. She's right.
All of, what was that, us?
It's right here, that chunk.
Yeah.
Is it this chunk?
Yeah.
It goes clear to the highway.
Okay, okay. Any qualms with making that a thing?
That's all in multi-use right now. That was what you were looking for, right? It was all ag.
Okay. All right, anything else on the map? No.
Can I just ask a question? Did you give any consideration to the request from Patrick Riley?
Yes, it's on our, it's on our list.
Um, while we're on this map, real quick, um, just heading to north from Kelton Bryant's place, um, the adjacent property to it is
This?
Red, no, go, go up a little, right there. Looks like a track. So that, that's the Red Rock Partners that own that. You know, if you just go to the left of that and up to the commercial zone, up to the, or the, yeah, right there, that is Cole Noize's house that is right there on the street, and then he has all the land behind it that he is raising, um, a couple horses on.
So it makes sense to bring that into this chunk as well.
It's in that green belt, too.
Okay.
Well, he has it in green belt.
Okay, as long as we keep it chunky.
Wait, so we're not spot zoning, though, right? We're, we're going to contiguous.
Chunking together.
All the way, okay.
Okay, back to the use table. I can't even remember if it's up or down at this point. There we go. There we go. Uh, adding stables, arenas and commercial boarding stalls to industrial. Uh, I have some mixed feelings about this, yeah, it's usually where they end up. However, we have so little industrial. That I wonder if we wanna hold on to that for said industrial park. But. They do usually end up in these types of locations, and Justin Ivans might be able to fill us in a little bit of that.
Well, anyway, industrial, I, I have down by the mill, and it's in industrial. And I have a crel there that I would like to add on to. A little bit.
I think out here, all of our industrial is basically mining.
So if it's, for example, we talked about grandfather den, is that crel grandfathered him? I mean, and I would probably like to make it a little bit bigger, I mean, if that's possible. And, and I wouldn't be able to make it bigger, I would like to make it bigger.
Well, if you're non-conforming, you can't make it bigger, but it doesn't require a permit either.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So would we be okay, for the sake of a lot of our industrial, like, I don't think we have anywhere designated for an industrial park in this county. But most of our industrial is mining and they're using it in this way where they're double dipping the ag into it, so it would make sense to. Allow for this. Qualms?
No qualms.
Got nothing.
Okay. Um, and then just something we need to coordinate, anywhere that there are stables, arenas, boarding stalls. Uh. That sort of animal operation, we need to have stock ponds also be permitted. So we need to just do a little table coordination with that, and make sure we got it. Okay, this one I kinda wanna think about splitting up. So we've got fur goods manufacturing and taxidermy. Um. I almost feel like we should break out taxidermy. But. I'll take your advice on it, you know, fur, fur goods manufacturing is conditional, only in industrial. Because of just kind of the yuck of it. Um, now, this does not hinder a home-based taxidermy.
But he has a shop in the back, and so it's not in his home. I don't think anybody here would say it could be permissible.
It's still home-based. You're not, you're gonna not take your taxidermy chemicals in the house, you're gonna do it in your garage, you're out.
Except for residential. I mean, why can't we make it permissible?
I think the one concern with this is the chemicals and the, the body waste stuff.
My dad did taxidermy my whole life growing up. Yeah, absolutely, yep.
So, so if we did it in multi-use, cause you're in multi-use now. I mean, that'll, that opens it up to all multi-use. And if we do have somebody come in with mink farm.
Well, I would argue community commercial, I mean, if we're going to allow truck stops, surely we could do taxidermy, I, I just don't know why. I mean, these are the perfect examples of somebody bringing up something that's missed and. We don't wanna affect anybody's business negative, if we can accommodate it, we ought to accommodate it.
Okay.
Well, I think a mink farm is something different in kind, right, it's agricultural.
It's gonna be nuisance no matter what.
Well, it's definitely heavier ag, not, not taxidermy.
Okay, okay, so we'll go ahead and make that change, um.
So permitted in.
It's gonna be conditional in multi-use because of some of the situations with the chemicals and that. Um, and we can work through that when we get there. Right now, you're non-conforming, you're good, but if you wanna expand, you'd have to come in for a conditional use.
So I'll expand real quick on conditional, because I've had lots of questions this week about it, so. So if it's conditional, we are required to vote yes, like, you're permitted to do that under certain conditions. And those conditions have to be reasonable, so, we can't just come up with. Random things, usually the conditions are always the same, they have to meet. Health code, fire, you know, maybe. I don't know, what else, well, they're always. A standard list, and it's just something we look at and say, you know. Does it adversely affect somebody, if so, can a couple of conditions help there? But, but, if it's conditional, we're required to vote yes for it.
Disagree.
On that?
Yes.
That's what we were taught in our.
But now they re- they, I think you missed the other part, unless that, you can deny it if there is evidence substantial. Uh, what is the word I'm looking for?
Detriment.
Uh, detriment, yeah, you can, if you can actually defend it with substantial evidence, you can deny it. But generally speaking. We, we have to consider if it can be mitigated by putting in conditions. I just wanna make sure that we're not assuming that we always have to approve it.
An example might be a paint shop, we might require an extra hood. You know, or a filter system or something, you can't just be spraying paint all over. So, it depends on the use, and that's why it's conditional is, we're gonna look at what you're doing. And adjust that so that it doesn't hinder your neighbor. Um, the last thing, I gotta kinda look into this, um. They would like mining and gravel pits put into multi-use. Um, gravel pits, as far as I understand it, state code, they have to be in ag. And so, um, I would like to leave, I think we're looking at the, the grand planned here.
Gravel pits don't have to just be an ag.
They're exempt.
Yeah.
They're exempted now. So if we look at the countywide. The countywide, basically all of our outline spots. Are multi-use, and the reason why we did that is because multi-use is the most broad. Lots of options there. Um, if we tap it back to ag, you're a little bit more limited on your uses. With things like gravel pit, I almost think I would like to keep this in multi-use, and if somebody is opening a gravel pit. Um, that is something the county commission can call upon middle of the year. And because it's a critical infrastructure, we can get that zone changed. Mid-year, without waiting till December. Um, so there's certain, there's certain protections under gravel pits that we gotta.
So are you saying permit in, in multi-use, or are you saying?
I'm saying we.
Wants to do a gravel pit, they need to come and ask for it.
I'm saying we leave it, I, I think we leave all of our outliers as multi-use. Um, let's say out here, they wanna do gravel pit, I don't know, I just picked a block. They'd come in, county commission can call for it, hey, that needs to be green and it can be a gravel pit in a month.
So for clarification, I thought all of those squares were multi-use because that's what Sitla had requested.
Correct.
Okay.
So are you guys okay with, with that, that if they are doing a gravel pit, come in for a zone change rather than open up all of our. Multi-use to gravel pits?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
Then we can do a kind of a one-by-one issue.
I heard a lot of people saying they do gravel pits. Yeah, I.
So the other thing is we can change it to ag, but which spots do you change to ag? Like, we are changing a few of them to ag that are selective, cause they know there's gravel there. So I don't wanna like. Change the whole swath of it, if we don't know that there's gravel there or not, if that's the main purpose of why we're changing it, and that's why I think they should just come in for a zone change.
If you're gonna put it in, uh, multi-use, which is, which you could be putting a gravel pit near residential, why wouldn't you make it conditional?
We could.
So it's permissible and industrial, and then it's conditional when it comes into multi-use. Then it's like, okay, you're, you're getting ready to put a pit in next to seven existing homes. That's not.
And so they'd have to do some mitigation with that?
I would say I'd agree with making them conditional, because I've owned one, and then. It gets assessed at a high rate, and so, once we quit, we had to make sure we changed it back. You know, but, I would like to be able to come back or whoever. You know, when the need arises, or I wanna sell some gravel, then I can do that.
Okay, so conditional and multi-use. Okay, coming to yours, Pat Creek. Alright, so right now this is Spanish Valley, it looks a little different than we're used to. So, this is, cause it's, just turn your head. Um, so did you come up the, the, uh, wash, no, hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait, I'm up here.
Hey, push this button right here. Push that button right there.
Oh, that's so much better, oh, thank God. Okay, here we go. Uh, some of you had troubles with these files, they are huge files. They don't work great on a phone. But they do work on a computer, but it does take a few minutes to boot them up, cause they're big files. Okay, so Pat Creek's up here. Um, so this is kinda the Pat Creek neighborhood, this is the ranch that's up top. Um, Pat Creek is currently in multi-use, as per the two thousand thirteen map.
That's not right. We're not, we're in agriculture. It's, uh, if you look, ranch is bisected by the boundary between. Um, BLM and Forest Service land. The part that borders Forest Service land is mixed use, the part that borders. BLM land is agricultural.
So. Oh my gosh. Drive your car. Are you driving over there, don't touch it.
But you see, you see the green and yellow?
Yeah.
The line between the green and the yellow is the boundary between Forest Service and the BLM. You can see the line on that. There're probably eight or nine blocks in agricultural and the rest of the.
Okay, so we're mixing between ag below, downstream, multi-use upstream. Okay.
But nobody wants either of those, e- e- everybody wants. The ten cabins that are rented out.
What do you want?
Residential, it's a residential community.
So the problem, and we've had this discussion once before, the problem is the big ranch up there. Um, the way that they've divvied that up.
The upper Pat Creek, right?
No, the ranch that's right there, it's smack in the middle.
Oh, you mean the, the, the one that's operated as a, basically.
The original homestead.
So the way that they've parceled those off is basically like a condominium. And I think if we go to residential. That properly, that property would become pretty worthless.
I, I don't understand. I mean, they own the property.
Those are all individually owned cabins.
Right. But the way that they. For the common ground.
All of us have common ground.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why we can't just make it residential.
And then bring in all the cabins as non-conforming?
Sure, we're gonna ha- have lots of non-conforming anyway.
I mean, it's kinda like what you said about. Forty-four, thirty-four out of the forty-four lots are used residentially and are, are restricted to that in covenants. And then there's the ten that are used as overnight rentals.
And there are no covenants on them that restricts them?
There's, there's no, there's covenants that say they can use overnight rentals. But all the other covenants say no. And that's the way it's always been.
So if we made it residential, what would, what would protect their?
Right.
Non-conforming, I mean.
But they'd never be able to add anything else up there.
Um, I would tend to agree, I would probably want to hear from them before we did that.
You know, we've notified them.
I mean, I, I, I just think that's fair, if we made that concession.
And the other option would be to, it's a, it's a single subdivision, it's addition number one. You could make that multi-use and the rest of the subdivisions around it.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could make that, this is exactly what we don't wanna do. We could spot zone that as recreational support and everything around it.
Where does it fall in that?
It's right in the middle.
It's right in the middle, it's not on a side or anything?
It's kind of down and in the middle.
It's surrounded by.
It's surrounded.
Yeah, and that's why it's not.
And that's the only ones that are doing nightly rentals is the cabins there. I was thinking there was a couple more in there.
So here's, here's Pat Creek. And it's right here.
Those are the ones that are doing.
The overnight rentals, but you can see on the parcel fabric. It's weird.
Oh, they just sold like the actual.
Yeah.
Just the house itself.
And that's what worries me, is I don't wanna run these guys where, well, you just made my property worthless.
Those are historical cabins too, it's not just a house, they're like historical cabin halls. So to get them in a situation where they're a non-conforming use would, you'd have problems.
Well, and I think these guys are gonna want land to expand to do a couple more, cause they've got it.
They can't.
They can't.
They can't.
They could if we have it recreational support.
M four.
So what do you guys think, do you wanna go all one way, all the other way, or do you want to spot zone it?
And nobody's heard from them? They haven't commented or weighed in?
No.
They're, they don't know what they want.
They don't know what they want, so they could come in for a zone change later, if we just blanketed it re- resident.
They feel, I mean, we all feel kinda protected, cause we do have covenants, you guys, I mean, but, but at the same time, we would prefer the covenants. That the zoning. Cause it just makes it easier, like you say, if people call and say, can I do this?
Somebody, somebody just filed a law based on the zoning. And discovered they couldn't build. Zoning is here and the covenants are here, and they, they had to put the law back on the market, huge transaction costs for that, which is very unfortunate.
Well, I know we hate spot zoning, so I don't know if that's the greatest option, but. Maybe we ought to reach out first before we decide?
I think we do it residential and make it non-conforming.
And they can ask for a zone change.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, there's a homeowners association.
For that ten.
But there's a separate thing, the rest of the residents, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's six subdivisions up there.
Right.
Okay, so we'll put that area.
Or even what?
Good, good question.
Thank you.
So.
We don't have to fence out.
Okay, so let's move on, so we're gonna switch that to residential. Um, I have a few changes in the document.
The fencing is part of the ordinance, correct?
Yes, we are a fence-out county.
Thank you.
That's a quick answer.
I mean, we've discussed that, if anybody liked to make comment on that, we know it's a big discussion, but, we made it fence out, so. I'm with you. BLM's gonna have to come and fence a whole lot of stuff, but they want me to stay off, so. The Sean's cows.
Yes.
The one that should've never went through, that one, yeah.
Okay, into the ordinance. Page twelve and page seventy.
I don't think we covered, um, the RV and the use table.
When we get to the.
When we get to the.
Let me get to that in the ordinance here, the other thing is we're. We're struggling with what is an RV, because RVs are built to a standard. So there's something regulating them versus the guy with the bus, the building out himself. And so, we're trying to figure that one out, because it's neither here nor there, it's in like Department of Motor Vehicles. It's fancy bus, sir, so, we're trying to figure out, uh, what counts as an RV. But our main concern with RVs long-term is safety. And it's not just fire safety, it's wind loads, it's snow loads. Um, we had that RV just blow over down there off what used to be Saint Danes, it blew it over onto his Jeep. So, it does happen, we don't wanna put people in a tight spot.
Can I make a comment on RVs, just real quick, on your RV, so, so one thing I learned is, when you get a building permit. Basically what that does is that informs the assessor that you're doing something. I mean, before I, I mean, and so come a year, they're going to assess you, right? So they're gonna assess whatever that building was, whatever the assessed value is. So we s- we face a lot, and I apologize for not knowing, I really do. But, like on a, a permanent RV, a camp trailer, whatever we want, your bus, right? So what happens there? I mean, I understand, I don't wanna pay any more taxes, I don't. But, it needs to kind of be fair, right? If that's your permanent home. It's, and it's fixed, it's, it's not going anywhere, it's hooked to, we hopefully hook it to, to utilities, you know, waste, so. The health department.
We have, we have approved septic up there, waiting, but. It, it's gonna be in place of one of the domes that I have approved, it's gonna be one of the rentals that I have eventually.
Sure, I, I guess I just make the comment because there's people, I'm fine with people living in RVs, I, I mean. It's temporary, hopefully, hopefully you get on your feet, hopefully you get something better, if not, that's the best you can do. I, I don't mean, I don't want to hinder that, I really don't, but.
So is, is, is this like based on? Taxes, like just.
No, so let me give you some history on the RV-ness. So, the RVs has been a hot topic for a while, we know there's tons of people living in an RV in our county. The cities are cracking down on RVs, because it is in state law that you cannot live full-time in an RV in the city. What that meant for us as a county is that it's gonna get kicked out to the county. If you, if they're getting shut down in Monticello and Blanding and Bluff, guess where they're gonna go? To the other side of the fence. We do not want to punish people who that's the best that they can do. If that's what they got, then let's figure out a way to make it work, but we also want people to be in a sanitary, safe place. We do not want hobbles and shanty towns popping up. Um, so we've really. We have gone out on a huge limb to allow for RVs as a county. We've got a few holdups, like you gotta have it hooked up to a septic. We got way too many people pooping out back. So, we're trying to meet that one in the middle. With that, we realize that most people that are in a permanent RV. That's all they got, so they can't afford a twelve thousand dollar septic. So we're working with economic development to come up with some resources, who does septic pro bono? You know, we got the heat program here in San Juan County, like, there's these programs to help people out so that they're not living in squalor. We do not want people to stall out there. It's one thing if you're like, hey, I'm living in RV while I build the house, or, you know, this is the best I can do for now. But we don't want people to stay living in an RV forever. That's not the plan.
A little bit of it is about taxes and building permits and building codes, because there's so many different. So like, we talked about, one of the meetings, if you had, if you had a camp trailer. RV that was licensed, I mean, that's, that's different than one that isn't, I mean.
So as it's written now, um, your RV, and this isn't. It's more of a code regulation thing than a tax thing, um, although the assessors were concerned about that. But you have to have your yearly tags on it and the wills have to be on it. Otherwise, you're getting bumped into like an affixed. So you have to have your yearly stickers on it, like you're driving it down the road. Yep, and so that accounts for the tax part of it, and that appeased them. And it's gotta have wills ready to drive. Because if you take something and park it and affix it, now it is real estate property that gets kicked over to our side. Of county assessment. Um, but again, the, the things that are a little dicey in allowing for this. No building inspector looks at that thing. So, the yearly inspector's gonna go out, he's gonna check your power hookup and your septic hookup, maybe your water hook. But he is not going to inspect what you put on that. And that's where it gets a little dicey, because if a fire breaks out in there and you got a family of four, somebody's probably gonna die. So, that's what we're worried about. So that's it, so this is where, if it is stickered. If it's stickered, we feel better about it, and there's a sticker in your door, hey, it was manufactured to, I can't remember the code. The RV code, right? We feel better about that, because they do realize, hey, we need materials that are gonna bu- burn slower. So that people have a chance to get out, we need multiple egresses, so if they're stickered, we like them. But if you're homemaking something. No one ever looks at what that is, and especially if you're using it for a commercial use. Now we've got some big problems with, it's not just you back there.
Renting the bus, I don't have the answer, yes, no, indifferent, I mean, I.
You, you know, I have like approved twenty domes up there.
Let's, let's get back to the redlining and.
Okay, so we'll have to follow up with you later on down the road. I have, I have the changes listed on the agenda first, and then we can open it up to whatever else you guys wanna talk about. Okay, page thirteen kennel. We changed very slightly, but it made it quite dramatic, we said and/or cats. So technically you could have four dogs and four cats. Yes. Protection or guardian dogs. I'm gonna say if you got a great pair of knees with the sheep.
And hunting dogs should not be included in.
I was gonna say.
Stock dogs are not pets, hunting dogs are not pets.
That was actually one of the things that came up. Yeah, correct. I would, I would assume a stock dog that is living with the animals as being part of that animal flock.
I assumed or working with the animal is also part of the ag business, at least from where I.
We're looking at preventing the crazy cat lady. So we can, we will look at that. Okay, forty-nine. Subdivision chapter, we missed one thing we wanted to change after we had it adopted, so it's a good thing we got enough swing at it. Um, very minor, on the. On the signature blocks, road department wanted a signature and fire marshal wanted a signature. Just so that it gets approved through them, and I think that's very appropriate. Page sixty-eight. Is gone. So page sixty-eight is the removal of the animal density standards. Um, we'll also have to go back through the vocabulary definitions and omit anything that's not applicable at this time.
Um, so, without having that. Does that just mean we aren't regulating at all, you can have whatever you want, any zone?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
And, you know, if your next door neighbor's getting a little out of hand, you still have nuisance ordinance, so.
And do we wanna get rid of how it can't be near a waterway?
Yes, cause I mean, every waterway on the mountain has cows stepping in it. I mean, there is.
I don't think we're gonna dodge that. Spring protection. Okay, and then last one I have on my list is seventy-two, right here, I misspoke at ten lots. A planned unit development is fifteen lots or more. Everything under that would be a subdivision.
That you would have administrative approval over. That's a lot.
Is that R wording, or is that from the state of Utah?
No, that can't be from the state.
Who chose fifteen, I guess is my question.
Yeah.
Do you remember Mitch? Do you remember how we came to fifteen lots?
On a PUD.
I don't.
Do you wanna lower it?
I thought originally it was like. Over four but below ten?
So four is this. That was the discussion, I thought that's what we had done, four and ten is what we discussed in the meeting.
That's the one I missed, but I'm okay with the fifteen.
Fifteen lots, it, it should kick over into planning commission approval.
So you wanna lower that down to ten lots?
I would propose that, if everybody else is good with that.
I kinda like fifteen.
We voted earlier about her sending us the, an email as. Yeah, notification as these come up, so if we had an issue with any of these subdivisions, that's when we would call in, not prior to approval. We could say, we could call in and say, hey.
This is the one and would like to see it.
Yes.
I still not exactly sure just legally how that works, where the state has the county on a clock. Where they have them on that twenty business day clock.
Four review cycles, it's tight.
That's the state CLEDMO, CLEDMO correct, so that's kinda out of our hands.
See, and I like the clock.
I do too.
Because you look at, how many times you submit plans or whatever, and you wait six months to get approved for it.
I think it is very, I mean, it's quite. Onder, I mean, there's a lot there, if you can comply and get that all before the county. And the county doesn't have, I mean.
The reason why I like the clock is because we have some that just cannot get it right. And it takes them years and years, and you're like, just fix the red lines we've sent you previously.
There's gotta be a clock.
So, for us, it's like, nope, you didn't make it.
Well, that's not us, that's just the state, but it's either we decide ten or fifteen.
Yeah, we have to keep the clock.
Twelve and a half.
Fifteen.
Why, so why, what's your reasoning Lloyd, why fifteen?
Why restrict, uh, somebody, cause you or I are gonna own fifteen acres or. You know, be able to make a subdivision of fifteen, we're not big developers, so do you wanna do a plan?
Fifteen seems pretty big.
I will, I will say this, this is.
We look at Lydia's subdivision.
Yeah, how many is in there?
So, Lloyd.
That's big, Lydia's big.
The planned.
Just subdivision.
A planned unit development is quite an intense situation for a developer to go through. That's one consideration to kick it up.
They didn't.
They did come to the planning commission.
They did come here, but it was just as a subdivision, it wasn't a planned unit development.
Well, because at the time, but still, we got to see it, we got to see what all they were gonna do.
We went through it as a subdivision, we, you know, there was some things we put at it, but other than that, the subdivision looked great. Now you turn that into a planned uni- unit development, now, you or I are gonna spend an extra fifty thousand dollars. To have drawn up and specifically gone through, cause you're not gonna accept me drawing with a crayon of a subdivision. Yeah, exactly.
So this is about penciling out the development.
Yeah, so what you're doing is making.
The number fifteen has to do with whether or not.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I'll be honest, I don't want to go through planned unit developments unless they're huge.
Okay, so that's what I just wanna, Trent, you know, I wanna understand really that that's why the number is being picked, is because financially it's more viable. For a smaller developer to do. Okay.
Case, like more, fifteen is less, and I just got told for a couple hours, less is better, so.
It would get, it, it'd streamline things and allow things.
So you're saying eight?
No, I'm saying fif- I'd go twenty.
I'm with Cody, we're going twenty now.
Holding, holding at fifteen.
Yeah, we got two and two right now, do you wanna see?
Okay, those are, those are all the comments, hold on, let me rephrase that. Those are all the sustenance comments I had that pinpointed, I need this change. Um, there were a lot of comments that I forwarded you guys today. Um, I skimmed through those and tried to pick out what do they need, some of it was just. We don't like you, so I, I don't have anything to do with that. So, any other changes? Fifteen.
I had a quick question online.
So we're not allowed to take comments at this point in time?
But they can make them.
It's a question.
As long as it doesn't get debatable.
No, so this was back to, um, zoning, I had a question, because I'll be a future. Um, private owner land, um, I noticed that you guys had, um. Given choices to certain landowners. If I purchase a land and it's, uh, in a, in a zoning area. Am I able to change that when I purchase the land?
No, so, for small, and this is why I was trying to get people to come talk to me early.
Existing landowners.
We were very flexible up until this point. But once it's legally adopted, you have to go through a zoning amendment change, and that means we have to redo everything we just did. Public notices, postcards are three thousand dollars a pop, so we'd like to limit that. So that is why, for both cost efficiency, but also we need to see the bigger picture. If we just get all these little private landowners that want to change zoning. We're probably gonna say no, because it's spot zoning. But if we get, hey, there's kind of a chunk over here that wants to be this, and there's kind of a couple people over here that wanna be that, if we can see that broader picture. Then we're more apt to, okay, we're gonna, we wanna change this zoning to help out these several property owners. Um, so we will be entertaining zoning request changes every October. Okay, so every October, cause we're gonna have a bunch of them throughout the year, you can send it to me anytime and I will put you on for October. But we need to see how if we change all of these, what does that do to our big picture? Not just right here and right over here, because that's how things have gotten messy in the past in Spanish Valley.
It turned into a discussion.
I'm just telling.
Yeah, wrap it up.
So, so, long story short. Yes, you may apply for a spot zone change, but those will only be entertained once a year, so we can get the big picture of what's going on altogether.
Okay, I appreciate your, um, answering that for me, thank you.
Sorry, Trent, shut up.
So, can we go back to the use chart?
Yep.
I want you to finish answering the next question.
The RVs? Well, I.
But we need to finish. But we need to finish Anne's question.
I didn't ask it yet.
I think we wanna look at, hold on, we wanna look at design standards is where it is. Okay. Okay, there you go, long-term RV dwellings shall. Unless located in RV park, be limited to one unit per lot on a one acre minimum lot. The reason why we did this was that we do not start having these huge encampments. I would be willing to go up to like two, but not ten.
I thought we had agreed on two, I thought we were at two.
We can go to two. I think that starts to get a little.
Where were you at on this?
It doesn't even have one in there.
Eight, I got eight, I got eight.
So how much does it cost for an RV to hook up to sanitary sewer or septic? And I'm sorry, I have to ask, in Spanish Valley service district?
Oh, you mean, uh, if you're, they were gonna put in a single ERU, they're paying eight thousand dollars in impact fees.
For that one RV? So if you hook up. To a, um, in Spanish Valley, for example, where the impacts are higher, you know, out in the. Other parts of the county, impacts aren't, it makes more sense to have them. Um, but in Spanish Valley where we are looking at density, we're looking at putting more people there, it, you're saying it's gonna cost.
So, single, single, you're gonna pay one ERU, there's a minimum of one, uh, one ERU. Each camp spot's point seven nine of an ERU. So if you have five, five times point seven nine, and that's what your ERUs are, that's what you're paying in impacts. That's what your monthly rate is, is five times the ninety something dollars a month, and then when you pay your water usage. It's a dollar eighteen per thousand gallons, times five on your water usage also.
So it's not cheap?
No, no, it's multiplier, most of the campers that you see out there, like the one on the highway that just did the big upgrade. Were hundred and eighty thousand dollars in impact fees.
And so, what if that person, that hookup is originally gonna be for an RV, but then maybe they do decide to build? They can still use that same hookup.
That single year, yep.
Um, but for a household, it might go up if.
Yeah, because, cuz you're, you're basing it off of a household, I mean, and I don't care if you have twenty kids, you're a household, that's a single year, you, that's what you get.
So, cuz my concern was, well, RVs are an economical way to live. Is it going to become something where you'll see RVs just start popping up all over the place? Um, it doesn't sound like that because there's gonna be infrastructure that has to be put in for each one of those sites. And I'm not talking about RV parks necessarily, cuz we're also.
Talking about on private land?
Yeah, on private land, I could put one on my mind if I had, but you have to have an acre minimum, right?
So there's that one acre minimum, and the reason why we did that was that you aren't hindering your neighbor so much. There's space.
In between.
Yeah, you got your nice house next door and they wanna pull up an RV and live in it, it's like eh.
We, we have, we have allowed people to go to quarter acres, they've got a nice side yard on, uh, on a quarter acre next to their house. They can back an RV in, let, you know, somebody stay there, uh, that's a quarter acre. So if we're only allowing one per acre, you have to own an acre to have an RV on.
If it's just an RV.
Disagree with that, one hundred percent. And I think we went through this last time, talked about the same thing.
Let's do it again, Lloyd.
Absolutely, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, uh.
So you wanna say one and get rid of the acre minimum?
Well, I can understand where Anne's coming from, if you have quarter acre lots, you don't wanna be going down the street and everybody is on an RV.
So how about we get rid of the one acre?
So, I look at it this way, I mean, if you don't like the RV, do you like the hype trailer? Or the pre hype trailer next door? Or do you not like the five thousand square?
We did say that they could count as an ADU.
But you can't long-term rent them.
But you can't short-term rent them, and you can't long-term rent them in residential.
Right, but how are we gonna please that?
It's gonna be real difficult with the way Lloyd wants it to go.
Wanting to like paint the picture, let's see what the implications are.
Well, I think we've already seen some of the implications if we open it up, this one, I feel we need to keep buckled down just a little bit. Because we have encampment starting big time.
I would say the conditional use RV park is not hard by any means though, I mean, you can come in and. Do a conditional use for five, I mean, depending on the, the lot size.
But there's a difference between an RV park and a family-owned property that they're putting four or five campers on.
Fight him on it.
I don't know, I, I'm not going to, I don't disagree.
Our attorneys thought that they were one in the same. I just think when you think of the use of hunting camp, and you think of the use of an RV park, not long-term. It is the same use, and I would like to clean this up a little bit because what we did on our work session made it just really convoluted. For people to be like, am I this, am I this, am I temporary, am I a, am I living six months in it, like? And so I'd like to clean this up and simplify it so that we only have like three categories.
So maybe we need to go to, um, less, more, more Cs and less those.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna change anything on that RV, and I'm not calling it an RV park.
It's just the.
RV living, I, I would say a minimum of two per acre.
Okay, so two per acre and leave it alone.
I'm not, I'm not wanting it to be.
Believe the minimum lot size.
So if I have a half acre, because we got, are you saying two per acre? Or are you saying half acre, I can have one? And if I have four acres, I can have eight.
What are you saying, half? One, one, one RV per half acre.
One acre max, like you can only have two per parcel, period.
No.
So if you got eight acres, you cannot have sixteen RVs without being an RV park.
Absolutely disagree with that. And, and we're going back to that whole discussion of LaSalle. I mean, the same thing we went through last time.
I know, but you still, you, I don't care how much land you got, you still have sixteen RVs up in one spot.
I still have, I still have nine kids. And each have a camper.
What's the definition of an RV park?
So we bumped it up to RV park, the space occupied by two or more mobile homes. Or RVs, including park model RVs, being used as recreational or long-term RV dwellings. Longer than a hundred and eighty days per year, so that's your.
See, I don't think it really affects the, the hunting camp.
The hunting camp, but they're, they're six months or less.
It's a great hunt.
And if they, if they leave them all year, I mean, we go back. I, I don't have a problem with the conversation, be like, hey, I mean. Are you renting these, you know, are you, are you just parking them for a hunt camp and you're not here? But you're here for a few months.
You're not on public land, but I need you to move it cuz it's been over fourteen days, move it over two spots.
Now, hold on to fourteen twenty, we went a hundred and eighty.
Let's make it easier, not harder, for reals.
Well, I think if we can rein it in a little bit because of all of the changes that we're opening things up to. If we can be a little conservative on this, um, especially, you know, and I'm again, from the perspective of Spanish Valley, it's the only one I can really have. It would be better to.
Is there a way to?
I would just be pro simplify it, I mean.
So what it, what would, what would that look like to you, Kristen?
So right now we have, basically have three types of RV. We've got RV dwelling for long-term use, so that's if you have one acre of land and hookups. That's just permitted, go for it.
What?
But it's not permitted in res- is it permitted in residential?
It's permitted everywhere. Then we have an RV dwelling as a temporary use, which I kinda feel like this one just needs to be dissolved. Because we have this one covering it.
Absolutely.
So I would like to dissolve this one for the temporary use. Does that make sense? Cuz you can already live in it full-time.
But, so that means people no longer need to come and ask us for permission.
That's right.
Which that one's kinda silly, I think.
Which is silly.
Very few people seem to know it, I wouldn't have done it. I wouldn't have come in and said, can I live in my camper while I build my house?
They'd have to, correct Lloyd?
What's that?
If they're in the special service district, they have to come and tell you.
Cuz they gotta get hookups.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna be paying their impact fees anyway.
But I, yeah, well, I mean.
To build a home.
But I guess that's kind of the, I mean, we have had those people without. That have come in and you have said like, well, I know you have this, this, and this. Without coming to us for.
We'll see, and, and, so the catch on that is, you can't get a building permit until we sign it, in Spanish Valley, so.
They don't need a building permit for the RV, I'm just saying, how does the special service district?
If they're building a house, and that's why we've got this um temporary use that we've had people come in for. Was to build a house, they're building the house, they're already paying their impact fees, they gotta hook their water and sewer up anyway, might as well dump their RV in it while they're finished building their house.
Just thought we were eliminating the temporary and just going to the.
Right, into a full-time permissible use.
Which I think also is, is bridging that ladder of housing, right? What I can afford right now is just the hookups and the RV, okay, well now your hookups are already in place to start building the house five years later. So, and I don't think anything gets loophole as far as building permits and that, cuz they'd still have to apply for it and get it approved through. Um, so that brings me to this minimum lot size, it's very small. Minimum lot size of one acre and are connected to approved power and water, and we're speculating.
It's on the dwelling RV trailer, long-term use.
We're speculating taking that down to a half acre?
I think so.
So community commercial, on either side of Spanish Valley Drive, people could buy up quarter acre lots and just hook up RVs to it.
Half acre.
I mean, oh, half acre lots, is that the vision? I'm just saying.
Is there, is there a way to?
But the thing is, why do we have it highway commercial? We never said that, nobody ever said, but, but it's highway commercial, as permissible use.
Oh, I know why, there was those people who talked to me about, um, the big shop on the highway in Spanish Valley. And they said the guy's living out back in an RV, that's how that showed up there.
Big shop.
And so we're like, what can we do with that, if they've got, if they've got their big shop out front and they wanna live out back, cuz they have a huge yard. So, that's, that's how it ended up in highway commercial.
I, I say no on that one, because I mean, we have dropped everything off of our highway commercial to make sure we maintain highway commercial.
So, we are allowing second floor residential units for like a live work? Okay.
But we're gonna lose valuable community commercial land.
I'm with Anne on that one, yeah, get rid of the highway commercial and the community commercial on that, on the camper.
Cuz that's valuable, you know, commercial land.
I knew what she was gonna say.
I'll push back on the community.
That's the curse of the problem, right? What is property value wise and developable oil for Spanish Valley, I mean, for LaSalle, that's great, you know, that's a.
Cuz we do need to kind of protect what we want to be our downtowns at some point, cuz it's like we want this to build out.
And I, I think this is the part I feel the worst about, and they, and, and this kind of meeting and, and what the public is because. Like, I'm all for less, I mean, but, but Spanish Valley is different, you could see the public comments tonight. And their comments, for the most part, were different.
Was too.
Well, and most of them wanted some kind of a little restriction, is how I took their comments.
But ninety percent of the people in here wanted less restriction, government restriction.
Right, so that's.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something that nobody on this board wants to hear other than maybe Anne.
Hold on, run it past me first.
I still, cuz it would throw everything out, basically, but I still think Spanish Valley, somewhere in Spanish Valley. Should have its own little zone.
Not till it becomes its own city.
Well, I wish that would happen because I think a lot less people would.
It is part of the county.
Yeah, we, we won't. See, and so.
I, I'm not arguing either, I'm just saying, I, I, I feel for Anne, I see where she's coming from, I mean.
Well, and I think by having two separate ordinances and, you know.
I don't wanna do that, I just want maybe, that just is. Just a magical zone, that people from Spanish Valley can come in and. And their comments kind of fall through these cracks and they kind of get bulldozed by the rest of the county, I think.
Well, cuz the needs are so different and the economy's different, and it's much denser, you know, we're all. Getting, um, our neighbors are getting closer and closer to us. But so, I did learn that we don't have to annex in order to have our own planning commission, just as another aside. If Spanish, if Spanish Valley wanted to create their own span- um, planning commission, they could.
Casablanca.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to move to Casablanca if you want that.
The what, county would have. Exactly.
It, it's a process.
Okay, so anyway, not, it's not for conversation tonight necessarily, but, um, back to the, the point is. Community commercial, do we want? Do that land to be developed with, you know, quarter acre lots of RVs on either side?
When we really need it to be downtown.
Well, at some point we'll come back.
Or a mixed use, right, we want some residence, we want.
It's not good. And we've already had the same thing with residential, short-term rentals and being permissible everywhere else.
Oh, but we haven't gotten to that yet.
I'm just saying, but that, that's the same, that's the same conversation, basically, it's, I want them permissible. For everybody in all of those zones, but your comments in the emails and other peoples. From Spanish Valley, they, they definitely don't, but.
But LaSalle does, you know, or Lending does, you know, so, how to balance it, I, it's, I don't, it's.
That's the biggest problem, trying to explain it to public this week, it's like, well, why, and sometimes I just have to say, I blame it on Spanish Valley, honestly.
I think most people from Spanish Valley wanna be able to have an RV that a family member can stay in, or two, I think most people.
I, I hear you.
Feel exactly like what it does.
I would hear you, but, but I would just, just say that I have heard plenty of people that would say no.
But somewhere we could keep it in multiple use.
So, let, let's pull a vote on this real quick.
But keep it out of commer- highway commercial.
Highway commercial?
No.
Do we want it community commercial?
No.
No. Okay, so let's vote.
TC says yes, and I'm probably for yes too.
But that's only because.
So, it stays in community commercial then.
Okay.
I mean, let's just simplify this, let's take a vote on this stuff, let's, and quit arguing about it, move on.
Yeah.
You know, these gummies would slow you down and put you to sleep. If you would chew on them.
Okay, so I lost that one.
Okay, so that takes us back to page sixty-eight, unless located in RV park, be limited to two units. Per lot on a one acre minimum lot size.
Yes. Under an acre, we're just not gonna talk about.
So a half acre would give you one.
Yeah.
Well, you don't get exponential, if you have four acres, you don't get eight RVs.
We talked about the definition of like.
I will work it so that it's right.
Versus this hunting camp situation, which we have a lot of, is there a way to change those definitions based on occupancy? Cuz when I look at RV parks, I think like they're gonna be occupied as renting, most of the time, right? When I think of hunting camp, it's like, every other weekend and one, and, and maybe a month, once a year, like. They're very low occupancy stuff, and, and to me, that's the difference, I understand there's an enforcement deal that. It's gonna have to figure it out because as far as what's on the property, it looks the same as an RV park, but the use. The actual use, I think is so different because of the occupancy.
And if I take my camper up in the spring and don't take it down till the fall. And if I take my camper up in the spring and don't take it down till the fall, I mean, that's my choice.
Well, we've had those that have started out being camps, then that use changed. And they were renting, they were long-term or short-term. And then they came in and like, well, we've been doing this.
That's where I think we get in trouble. Cause at some point, it makes a flip.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna take. Because you've got a couple people that are causing problems, you're gonna take it out on everybody else.
I don't though. I have a couple people not causing problems and a whole lot of mess. And that's that was my argument last time. Yeah, it sucks for these guys. If I go out and talk to one or two people, look at the situation, go, yeah, alright, you look okay. But I need stronger teeth to clean up. There's no two ways about it.
That's where the nuisance ordinance stuff comes in. If the neighbors don't appreciate what what my family does, I mean, like. My grandpa and his family grew up on this property, my mom grew up on this property and now there's a few campers down there. Because they like to go visit it on the weekend.
They hooked up a septic?
But but it's, yeah, I I honestly, I don't know on some of them, but. But the point is, is that it's 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 a memory. It's where the family goes to gather once in a while. It's not a. I don't have people out there and that's where they do all their messing and you know, they don't. Poop in the backyard there, like that's our property and we.
I hear ya and I can do it case by case, but you you have taken a lot of teeth out of trying to clean.
But we just heard from all of these people about.
No, 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 I like doing the two per lot.
And he doesn't like what I'm doing, that's where the teeth come in because my neighbors.
I like the two per lot. I like that a lot. But I'm talking about, you got twenty campers up in the bushes.
Lump together though, like a, I mean crap, man, half these RVs are nicer than my dag on double wide, right? Let's don't miss that along with the dude that's got his summer wide on wheels, like three of them stacked together that he's, you know. Or something like that. Those are two different in-kind things, right? Would you say cooking in?
So what do we wanna call that though? Cause we don't even, we don't have that one on the list. Mess RV encampment. So what do we wanna call that? Now we just added one more to the list. RV camping?
Ten seconds.
But see, this is what we're trying to avoid. We don't want a twenty acre filled, full of RVs. Call me, call me when you get there and let's see where you're at. But see, he doesn't want a conditional.
I just, I have a hard time.
What do we name hunting camp? RV hunting camp?
Comments are over, but cow camp should also be. Like the hunting camps, they're seasonal.
Yeah, but you guys are supposed to have campers.
Supposed to be a bed roll.
Hey, it's nine thirty. Let's roll.
In the trailer.
I'm prepared to be here all night. Let's get it right.
Yes, anywhere else. Yes, recreational support?
This is seasonal camp.
Seasonal RV camp. Okay, next item. Nope, yes, multi-use ag and rec support.
What about short-term rentals of RVs?
Uh, so this is where if you take your own life into your hands. That's on you, but we don't have an inspector for that RV, which makes the commercial use of it. Not okay, in my opinion. It's just that it it kicks into commercial space instead of private space.
Right, where people rent out their campers to other folks and I.
So what are you saying?
I'm just saying.
You're doing it anyways when you're renting out on on RV share, whatever.
My only concern about this is if we're allowing them for long-term use, this just reduces the capacity. Again, the the housing possibilities. But otherwise, I think they should be short-term rental.
Do we want to head this route? Do we want to allow RVs to be rented? Short-term? If you want to head that route, I think we can work with it and find something that meets like an expectation.
When we're gonna talk about short-term rentals in general then, because it's the same, my my. Concern is it doesn't matter what kind of short-term rental it is.
What do you guys think?
I don't see why it shouldn't be a short-term rental.
Short-term rental, short-term rental.
I think it's all about. The use table and how we're gonna either conditional use it, permitted, and what zones we're gonna do. I think we gotta go back to that.
If if you make, if you make them short-term rental. And we're we're making short-term rentals permissible in almost every. You've got a nightly rental on every driveway, every single driveway. Through the entire county. But I mean, that's your personal. If you don't mind people coming and standing in your backyard every night.
So we could short, but so let's go back to the use table and decide whether or not we're gonna conditional or permit short-term rentals.
The overnight rental you might experience would be somewhere that's already available to have an overnight rental.
So that includes, and and so are we serious about permitting? Because I have a real problem if we are going to.
The flip side of this, I may have an answer. We are permitting them here, but the business license application has that extra checklist. And that's carbon monoxide detectors and parking and fire extinguishers.
But if it's not, if it's just permitted, how? Are they still obligated to come and get a business license? How are you going to know that they did that?
Oh, we know. I can't tell you the ways that we know, but we know.
I'll tell you when 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 you use uh Airbnb or um. When they pay, cause they automatically pull your DRT. When they pay it to the state, you have to put which county it's supposed to go to. It comes to the county, that's when they figure out that you.
I think we need to change them from permitted to conditional because it's the only compromise I can. Really stand behind, cause our county is not ready to manage permitting. Short-term rentals across the board in that zone.
We are by next week.
Until until you have a code enforcement officer.
We're getting one. I I got the go-ahead.
Here's the other piece to it. You pack all these people into Spanish Valley and then you put a ninety-five bay truck stop in that valley. You are basically saying, we don't care about. You know, it's it's just absolutely opposite. You don't cite a trucks ninety-five bay truck stop. Anywhere near residential in the first place and that's argued been or been argued whether or not. How residential it is, but now you are absolutely gonna make it residential. And you're gonna put a ninety-five bay truck stop there too. It just is completely contradictory to me, so. The only way that we can actually manage it is to make them seize. I I just don't see how that. Is unreasonable to ask for a conditional use for these things, so we can. Just have some idea of, we can see them coming through, we know who's got, you know. Who where they're happening, all of that, but it's gotta come through the planning commission.
I'll support that. I've tried to agree with you all night, this one I can't.
We're reevaluating.
This is a sweeping change we're asking residents to deal with and we are.
I just don't think it should be in residential.
We don't have hardly any residential. We just had to beg for some in Pat Creek right here tonight, you know? And then we made multiple use, all of the current residential is now multiple use. Which is gonna allow short-term rentals and on top of that, you're gonna make it permitted. It's just, it's crazy and we don't have the resources to. Even though you might say that we do to manage it.
So we're doing some department adjustments and I am getting a code enforcement officer. So like within the next week.
And then how long, I mean, it's a good idea, but when it lasts.
We just lost our building.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's not a sure thing.
Will you please listen for a second? Let's stay focused. So with that, business licenses coming under planning, so if you want a who took out a business licenses month report, just like building, we can. And so I, you can still keep tabs on it. If you want to go that far.
I have a question, kind of regarding that, like are you wanting conditional just so, just so we can keep tabs on it or what kind of conditions are you?
So when we're looking at the opportunity for neighbors to say, hey, you might not know this, but that. Short-term rental is gonna impact me this way or that way. Um, it makes it. You know.
Just more public.
Yeah, more transparent, so we can see, so yeah. People want transparency, that is absolutely one way we can get it.
Yeah, but it's one more way that your county can tell you what or not, what to do or not to do on your property.
Well, then then keep Ps in some of those zones and takes and make Cs in some of them instead of just P across the board.
I think we either leave it all conditioned or all permitted, because otherwise it's gonna get real messy on the application side.
What does short-term rentals do to a community? It makes everybody's best, the highest use of their property become short-term rental in it and they do not live there anymore. They go live somewhere else. And you do not have neighbors anymore. You do not have a community.
They all have land that could be short-term rentals and they all live there in their home. That doesn't always happen. It's not always some some blanket thing. What it really does is allow for people some upward economic mobility.
And I'm not saying I'm against, I don't wanna permit them at all. I'm just saying, let's control them. Yeah, we know that argument. There's money to be made.
Okay.
Alright, so that's my proposal that we go conditional use for short-term rentals.
Short-term rental, if they're permitted or conditional.
Short-term rental to conditional or permitted.
Any short-term or?
Across the board, including residential. I think you need to include residential. Don't bring it up.
Melissa, the argument for that, then I've talked to quite a few people about that one. It's a timing thing and and sometimes people win or you know, sometimes people gain, sometimes they lose a little. But for the most part. We have so little residential anyway.
I still think give them three months to apply. Anybody who we rezone as residential, give them three months to apply.
No, if they're currently non-conforming. Cause what you're gonna have happen is everybody in the next three months, everybody will apply in residential. Because you know there's a time.
I like what we did last month. I would say they're permitted across the board except for in residential.
And we are gonna, I mean, we do have this extra step that's kind of a pain in the butt.
They can continue doing it in residential, so we're not taking anything away from anybody. I mean, I don't, I won't support that, but I think, I don't think we're doing that, so I would just, I my vote, if Kristen's asking that's. We stick with what we did last month.
Can I throw one more wrench in?
No.
Okay, do you have them in highway commercial?
No.
Not at all.
Nope.
Okay, you have them in community commercial?
Yep.
We li- do we allow living on the ground floor in community commercial?
Yes.
Okay, so it's it's more or less.
You can have a full-on house in community.
So it's not across the board. We don't have it in, in highway commercial, we don't have it in industrial.
Right.
Okay, so I misspoke.
I'm just, I'm I'm just.
You're correct, nope, that's fine.
Yeah, clarifying, okay.
We don't have it in industrial.
Highway commercial and residential.
You want it? Industrial, meal?
So we have it in four zones. And I'm saying, let's make it at least conditional in community commercial and multiple use.
I vote no.
How about just community?
I like the way we have it. I I think if you mix and match conditional and permitted, it's gonna cause us trouble.
Okay, then I go back to my original.
Yeah, but we we do it all the week down the board.
It's the fact that this is getting shifted to the business license. And this is the point Jen's made last meeting is he said, look, what are you doing on overnight rental? It's the same thing that you're doing in like a home. And so. The the short-term rental bit of it is now a business license bit. It's not a land use bit because they're doing anything that they would do in a dwelling.
But but what Ann is saying is that if you make it a conditional in a certain one, now it is a land use for that zone. Otherwise, it's just business and all the permissible. So if if you're, if there's a questionable zone that you want to have a little more. Um, making sure it underlays with its surroundings.
We can mitigate any.
Um, then you can do a little bit of mitigation. That's what Ann's saying. Instead of it just being completely permissible. Not saying I'm agreeing with her, I think I'm just trying to explain what she's saying.
He's understanding me.
But he's not agreeing with you.
Um, so yeah, what, we should just put it to bed and vote, but then I would.
Okay, so where do you want a conditional?
Wherever we think the most residence. Residential growth will happen, which zone?
Multi-use.
Community commercial, residential.
Community commercial is the one that you need to control a little more than you do multi-use.
And we don't have a lot of community commercial in Spanish Valley.
Just because, oh, never mind, we changed your mind. Like you have to have very good reasons to deny this.
Well, we're not trying to deny, we're trying to manage that. We wanna make sure that it is in harmony with what is around it.
Sure. Sounds good.
I'm still gonna vote. Permissible in the four zones of the town.
Okay, so are we voting?
Yes.
Let's vote.
In unofficial vote, so you like it your way?
Yeah, I'm voting for.
Double Cs, Shay?
permitted.
Just permitted across the board, Trent?
I'm with Ann. Two Cs and two Ps.
Permitted.
Permitted everywhere.
Okay, we're going permitted across the board. Holding was what we got.
So so the ordinance is written, the way the ordinance is currently written, it's talking about it being a conditional use. Throughout the proposed one, so that's gotta be changed.
See, it would be so much easier.
Okay, so um with that, we will adjust as per. Melissa's comments, we will adjust the language. Um, on the short-term rental chapter, that it is not a a conditional use. So we'll go through and and coordinate all that.
Did we vote on the campers in night rentals?
Campers isn't highly rental.
Or we skipped over that one.
I I thought we said yes, let's go ahead.
I don't think we all said yes.
Well, what do you wanna say? Okay, next item.
Okay, uh, the reason for the. Okay, uh, the reason for the requirements for the private roads to meet a certain standard, can you just state that out loud, please?
Yep, so that fire and EMS can come pick you up.
So if somebody has, does somebody, if they have a road to their barn, do they have to do fifteen feet wide in gravel?
No.
Okay, why not?
Cause I don't care what you do behind your house in your barn.
Okay. Um-
So, so should, to, to Mr. Kendall's point on that though, should we better define that, cause it just says private roads?
So, private roads, when you're talking about a plat map, private road is what gets you to your property, it's your property access. Whatever, whatever your driveway is doing and all that, that's not a private road.
I could throw a wrench in this, but this is all in the IFC. So why do we need to put it in ours? If you have to follow the building code and the international fire code to do all this stuff-
We wanted redundancy with this one, so that people know what they're getting into when you try to subdivide and they have to put in a road. So Todd Adair felt strongly that this language should be in there so that, cause people don't know to go to that. We do.
Can that be part of our process?
Here it is, here's our county standards, here's what you gotta do. And then we, and we've had a huge problem with people and roads. They said they'd take on, and then they don't, and then it's muddy, and then it's flooding, and then they call them and say, can you come push my snow and fix my road?
So why would we say fifteen feet then?
So we're saying right up front, like, you, you're it, this is your private road, you need to maintain it, push it.
And the IFC say twenty feet though?
Hey, there's the wrench.
Our fire marshal says fifteen, do we need to get with the times?
I'll check it.
So you wanna do more?
Check it right now.
Require more, that's how you are.
All, all I'm saying is if our code contradicts what the fire code is, but we're doing it for fire code reasons, we shouldn't do it.
Right.
Do you want to take that language out and reference a fire code?
I just don't think you should be enforcing anybody to do on, anything on a private road. Because, honestly, I, I mean, you're, you're making them put a D-road in.
Well-
Well, a D is- Uh-huh?
It's better than a B. That much road base?
Yeah, a D, I-
B-roads, the, the bigger roads are B-roads.
Right.
Get B-roads in this county that don't use that stuff.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
That, and that's one thing I don't understand, and i- it's kind of the same thing in the eleven ordinance for Spanish Valley. We had to have a three-inch hard surface on any subdivision.
Even just changing it to ingress and egress to your property-
Right.
Makes it so that the other roads on your property don't happen, because, sure, Kristen doesn't care, but the person after Kristen or, or the neighbor, or whatever else, like, having that ambiguity in there is just going to get you sued.
Right.
Hands down, hundred percent.
See, and that, that's my thing, is that if the county will not adopt your road, cause they refuse to, they shouldn't be able to enforce you to bring it up.
Well, it is an issue though, there are, I've lived a lot of life on fire and EMS, there are places we can't get. Somebody died, some heart attack or whatever, like, well, that's on you, I guess, like-
Well, yeah, that happens all over, I mean, it's no different than Melissa going for a walk, you know, towards Lake Powell. You know, bears here, ambulance has to get there somewhere.
And breaks a wrist.
And break your wrist.
I got myself out, I got myself out.
So I, I feel like this, the section six on page sixty-six is pretty minimal. Whoops, I forget we're in the pack.
I, I think the big issue, it, it's, it's just not a fire and, and safety issue. Uh, private roads in San Juan County, we have a lot of developers in the past that come in, put in these subdivisions. And they don't wanna put in a, a, a master road. They wanna put in the, the waste amount of infrastructure that they can, so they sell the lots, people move in. There's no private agreement with that road. And then you get mudslides, you get snow, they want the road pushed. Then they start saying, we're gonna sue the county, cause the county let the developer do it. So there has to be regulation by the county. I don't know that it needs to be a fifteen-foot road, that's for you guys to decide, but there needs to be regulation aside from what the fire code says.
Okay, so I gotta disagree with you on this one, because if the county will not adopt the roads that we put in, we will bring, we'll bring it up to what you want, all your county requirements, if you want a paved surface, we're gonna do it. Will you take it? Nope, we don't want any more roads to move snow off of, then don't come in my yard and tell me how to build my road in my, in my yard.
So here's a-
And if it says private road on your plat, that's a private road, the county has no maintenance.
Where it comes into play is when people are trying to subdivide, and you have a private easement. It's a little too checked, you can't-
Look at-
So if you do a private road and you split it up in four lots-
Everybody that owns property owns a piece of that road.
Technically, and that would be a great way to do it, but here's what's happening.
That's how it's been done forever.
I know, and it's made a bunch of mess for me. Those four lots going down that one private road, everybody's supposed to pay in, right? No, who pays in? The guy at the end, why? Because he has to get down there to his house. So, it turns into a civil issue. Um, the other one, split in the road, okay, we'll split the road and have this be like its separate parcel. They don't pay the taxes on it, guess who it comes to? The county, now the county owns a piece of road that they do not want. And then, and they just skip town, so we really need to get, I'm in full support of keeping private roads as is. It is very important, not just for fire and, and egress, but it's, it protects what happens in the future to that property.
So the fire marshal is a county employee, and should be involved in this process.
He was.
So if he's involved in the process of any subdivision, we should just refer to him for all of these things.
We need a code book.
But the private roads, just for my clarification, is that just subdivisions, or do I have to, do I have to have that standard to, I own twenty acres, say, I build a house? You're requiring part of that?
It's just to get to your parcel.
To my parcel.
Not necessarily to the house.
Not to the home.
Whatever happens after that, you're like, whatever. But, and this, there's one right now that we're dealing with big time, they don't, they had like a little easement, where like, can't split it. And this is a big mess in Spanish Valley, well, I have this little easement, well, now that little easement has six slots off of it. And it's not a private road, and no one's paying in to fix the road, and we're not issuing a building permit till the road's fixed.
Well, what if we said something like, private roads that access a parcel must allow blah, 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 blah?
So, okay, I, I just gotta run this back, in, in Spanish Valley, let's, let's just, I, I wanna, I buy a piece of property, I pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand for it, I go to the service district, I pay eight thousand dollars for impact piece, just to get my permit. Our permits just went up again. I, I, this last permit I got was five thousand something dollars, I looked at Ben, I said, are you kidding me? The last one, which was eight months ago, was three thousand something, so we just took another hit there. So, that's all before I even started doing anything, now, I'm gonna get required to build a road up to the county spec, which I'm sure I'm gonna have to pay the county to come out and inspect, to make sure I got the right road base materials in place, am I not? So now I've, now I've got it, now I've gotta fill out an application for almost, it would be like an encroachment permit, so I can get inspections on my driveway.
That's the other thing, encroachment permits are a hot item right now.
Yeah, which, that's fine.
They used to be free, and then now the county, and this doesn't ask, building permits do not yell at me, I hate-
No, I'm just saying, ju- just to, just to even start your house, you're, you're already thirty thousand dollars up to it.
Encroachment permit used to be free, you used to fill it out, you go, and the fun, you talk about owning to the middle of the road, you know, I owned to the middle of the road, I own. Oh, but then I had to go to the county and pay a hundred dollars for an encroachment permit? To come off of their road that, that I pay taxes on, I don't like it either, I-
I would strongly suggest we leave this one in, so that people know what they're getting in for. Um, and the main reason why is because of the mess I have seen with subdivisions.
Okay, could you clarify?
But, this was, uh, led by the road, the county road superintendent, who has tons of experience, and I, I think a lot of this, uh, was based upon his recommendations.
So I am gonna add language.
I've got thirty years in it.
Roads that grant legal access to a parcel must allow-
I say we take a vote on it. Yeah, cause that, I, I do not want private roads in here being like this.
Didn't need a bathroom timeout in a while.
Cody, what do you think? Private roads?
Hell no.
Nope.
No requirements whatsoever.
Nope, if you're not, if the county's not gonna accept it.
I'm with this, with the change.
Okay, TC.
I think you oughta clarify, like, that this is not a ag road between ag structures and then the field and that sort of thing. Just to the parcel.
Just refer on the IFC.
First time it rains, and a half of it washes away, are you required to come back and rebuild it back up to county spec?
Absolutely.
Like the county would do for you if it was their one.
Yeah.
I think a lot of this comes down because, because there's-
Okay, let's keep going down the line, Trent, speak freely Shay.
Ah, speak freely, yeah, okay.
I'm gonna go with TC.
Holding with private road?
Changing verbiage.
Verbiage, yeah.
Okay. I know what Lloyd wants.
I, I think you need to refer to the IFC, that's it, no other regulations.
You want, you want section six taken out?
Yes.
That's three.
You want section six taken out, or do you want it to refer to the IFC?
Well, I'm good with that, I'm good with that, on the private roads.
Whole paragraph and just say, refer to the IFC.
See, and I don't want that, cause it probably-
Cause that's even, it's way more, it's twenty-five foot wide.
What the IFC does, and the reason that this is an issue, is that we've allowed too many people to just freelance on all this stuff. But what the IFC does is it comes in and requires people who are creating subdivisions to build an infrastructure where they can safely sell a lot that they can access to. This is not talking about TC getting to his front door on his current, on five acres of land, cause he built right in the middle of it.
It's more or less a minimum width.
Yeah, and, and, and a minimum distance to your property. I mean, it talks about, you have to be a hundred and fifty feet to your residence, this is in subdivision situations. This is not a private citizen that needs to access their front door, that we're requiring to pay all this money because they put a private road in.
And, and I think that's where we need to, that's where we need some clarification, right? You're talking about a subdivision.
Yeah.
Why is this not in the subdivision ordinance that we just passed and not even hardly referenced?
Well, and that's why I'm saying, we refer it to the IFC, cause it has all that, we don't.
Yeah.
And, and we bring the fire marshal in to this.
I have, I have had so many problems with roads, I want to keep it as intact with that grant legal access to a person.
There, there's gotta be some language, because otherwise, we're gonna get sued time to time.
And this is a, this is some-
If, if they could, if they get a subdivision approved with a private road, we're no longer liable for it.
Well, who's the first person that they point?
It doesn't matter, we're still not liable, whether they come and yell at us or not.
Doesn't matter if they were on the right or wrong, we get sued.
Even if it's a- approved as a private road, the, the county holds no ownership, no liability over it.
But-
We're, we're, we're gonna get sued and we're, and we're gonna pay for it.
Wait.
That makes zero sense to me.
Go out and inspect that road before they will grant a building, a building permit.
So the road has to be put in before you can start your house.
Yeah.
So you're gonna tear it up with all your construction equipment, building your house.
Sure.
This is, let's hear a quick, quick comment.
So if your county roads is not up to standard, like you're saying, and then the county grader comes by, did you sue the county because you took our material away?
Sure. I hear ya.
County roads are not as good as what you're requiring, so-
Listen, I have done a lot of road building at my house myself, and yeah, it's expensive, it wasn't my job. But, that's what it took to get it done.
That's, I mean, if you're worried about getting sued, can I go both, I mean, if, yeah, you get sued the other way too. Does the IFC have to, uh, sign off before any kind of development comes in?
The fire marshals should sign off on every subdivision, any development.
Yep, but this, this still needs to be on the checklist, and with these specifications.
I just agree, uh, we're still three votes right now, against it.
What checklist are you referring to?
As far as Ann.
The design standards.
I thought, I thought ours were already outvoted.
Well, no, I think, are, are we three right now?
Right now, we're three.
Oh, three, two.
And Ann is votes.
If this is about private roads, like, in more remote places, not subdivision.
This is any-
Here's the thing, if we take it out of here, then I would say this is onerous for more people than it is for the county to be worried about getting sued over.
If we take it out of here, we will cut and paste it into your road maintenance agreement. But this is what Todd wants to see, to, to sign off on your subdivision plat.
Well, then let that be his requirement, not ours.
Yes.
Have that, if that's what he wants to have, if that's what he wants in his paperwork, then you've got a court case.
I like having it in here because people know what they're getting in.
You see it earlier in the process, basically. Well, we don't-
Instead of getting hung-dingered with, oh, hey, now you've subdivided, now you need a residential.
Todd, I would fight that, if he's gonna make me to put, put it in.
I'll eat some popcorn while you guys-
Too old to wrestle, or I wish he'd send me a courtroom.
There's a whole chapter in the IFC about this, and we have one paragraph, and we're fighting to keep this in versus all the regulations that is already required internationally. That are so much better, when we could just refer to that for those people who want subdivisions.
All private roads that grant legal access to a parcel must uphold the requirements.
Of the IFC.
Of the IFC.
I can, I can support that.
That's all he was trying to say.
Okay, okay, keep going. Uh, somebody wanted us to change, to add, um, animal clinic to industrial. Veterinary animal clinic to industrial, I don't, I think that's perfectly fine, I don't see any problem with that. Okay. Okay, um. So then, we need to, Cassidy said something about enclosed storage needs more definition.
Um, we already talked about that.
Okay, then I didn't hear that.
Well, it was in a separate conversation.
Okay.
This is not talking about personal enclosed storage, this is commercial, storage units.
Okay.
I, I think, uh, she does raise a good point, that we, we probably need to define, uh, I'm not sure what the definition is of, of, uh-
Commercial storage units?
Well, I think we all know what commercial is, but, yeah, enclosed, what, what does that mean exactly? What's the definition?
Well, like, if somebody has a shed out back, I'm not counting that as commercial enclosed storage.
I'm not worried about it, you're worried about one of those.
Yeah, we need to put that-
Well, why don't we just say, commercial enclosed storage? You choose it yourself.
You're thinking like hack shed, first partner, like, give me some examples.
You have your hay barns, you have your, your grain bins that you, you know, the silvers. Those are enclosed storage, and so, you have a perspective.
It's also part of ag business, though.
Yeah.
Right, it's also a part of ag business. Like, when I think enclosed storage, I'm thinking like the U-Haul folks, that are about ready to build some enclosed storage in Spanish Valley.
Clarify that.
Could, could we do, could we just-
We don't build a barn, go build a barn.
You could put excluding, you could put commercial, the, the definition for commercial, or for, for sheds excluding any storage, sheds, barns, herediments, or anything else used to, uh- Uh, for farming and ranching activities or other activities related to. Uh, the property itself, something along those lines.
How?
Okay, so I will add a definition for enclosed storage. Hitting the U-Haul idea, excluding all that.
So, uh, the woman who had just started the um salon, she wanted to know the impact. The cosmetic industry, where she falls on that?
It depends on if it's a home-based business or a commercial, so as soon as she has like a shop that the public is coming to. That's gonna start headed towards salon, if she is doing it out of her garage.
But people are, but people are still coming to it.
So if there's parking.
Still a home base.
There's parking spots and a sign out front that. You have crossed the line into public territory.
Well, we, uh, so we have barber and beauty shops permitted. In highway commercial, community commercial, multiple use, I mean, a hard ton of tracking. And industrial. So if she's doing a home business, she's okay, but otherwise she needs to be in one of those zones. Um.
So a home occupation, real quick, let me read you the definition. A non-residential activity conducted primarily within a dwelling unit. Which is clearly secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. And does not involve the use of any accessory, building, or yard space or activity. Outside of the main building, not normally associated with residential use, and may not constitute a nuisance. So if you have a parking lot up front, you are now into that public space.
And that business.
Not just a residential use.
You're going to have people coming to your house.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So, so I'm just gonna ask, that was it that I had tracked from the, from the comments, I have one question about. Um, so if somebody is raising pheasants, are they in aviary?
Yes.
Okay, so. We have it as conditional in. So, oh, right. So, so it's permitted, oh, I I'm wondering what, we have it permitted in.
Ag.
Ag and multiple use.
And so those people in blending would be just fine.
They're fine, do we wanna make it um conditional anywhere?
Nope.
Okay.
You either have a bunch of birds or you know.
Okay.
And let me. Okay, good, okay. Any other changes?
I got one zone change. Uh, and and this was my fault, this girl's been calling me all week and I haven't felt like taking phone calls, but Crystal Alvarez. Uh, if you pull the zoning maps back up. Uh, so east, east of Monticello, and they call it. Howler, South Howler Road.
Sorry, use files or something.
County Road three oh eight. That's the city of line, you gotta keep.
And I got, I got, I got, I got, I got. Howler Road is out east?
Yep.
Five miles east, right, yeah?
Okay, come back.
Alright.
Right there. Where that square is.
Right here?
Yeah, that's the old Hunts Club. So come down. About a half a mile, and they would like to be zoned multi-use.
So this would be a spot zone?
Yeah.
Why do they wanna be?
They're wanting to put in some um food trucks, uh, operate them out of there, but.
So where are you talking?
Oh, there's Alvarez, oh, Doris Alvarez.
Yep.
Here?
No, yeah, there's Crystal, yeah.
Is that the one?
Yes.
What is it?
It's ag.
We, we could do either, yeah, I I'd, I wouldn't wanna do a tiny sliver, so.
For multi-use, do we want to add food trucks to ag? You said food trucks?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we add food trucks to ag on the use table?
Yeah, she, she requested multi-use.
I mean, that one's kind of a tough sell for me where she's stuck right in the middle of ag, that's.
And she's currently ag.
Yeah, but ag already does, um. When you sell your stuff on the side of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
So why isn't it considered a food stand?
It doesn't have a kitchen in it? A food truck would have.
Yeah, I think if we just add, I think the simplest thing is to just add food truck vendors to ag.
That's probably fine, but what if she buys multi-use for something else?
Yeah.
She had a whole list of stuff.
Yeah.
It it should be permitted on a food truck.
I'd like to.
I'm a nade stand, whatever.
Okay, I'm cautious because if you spot zone that one in the middle of nothing. Then we're gonna have a whole flurry of people wanting to spot zone their one lot.
I agree.
So, do we wanna make a multi-use trell back to town?
Wow, really? I mean. Ha, you know.
How big is?
People that are getting the changes are.
Hundred.
If it works for the county, you get your change, if it doesn't work for the county, you're not getting heard, you're not getting your change.
Well.
And if you're not here, you're not getting heard, so there's a lot of residents that don't have a voice in this.
My problem has always been with spot zoning. Everywhere we have a boundary is a problem area.
Okay, so.
Have, hey, you gotta be a hundred feet back from residential, you gotta do all these other things because you're next door.
So this, this joins up with the gemstone camp uh campground.
So let's make a chunk of it, I'm not opposed to it, but let's make a chunk of it multi-use out there so that.
Ru- Robertson changed the zone, why don't you just allow the use?
Well, that's what I wanted to do.
Well, and and I'm not sure what the entire use is, I just.
Cuz it'd be a lot easier for us to just add food trucks to ag.
Yeah, I think uh, I I think it would be a lot better to just allow the use.
Okay.
And not, because Ann brings out a great point, you know, we're kinda.
Preferential treatment here going on.
Well, the gemstone campground, where, what would that do to that?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Still.
Campgrounds are permitted in.
Yeah.
Because that's my daughter's.
Right.
So I think we leave it acts that we don't spot zone that one little thing.
Change the use tonight. Can we still reach out to her?
How fast we got? Okay, are there any other considerations before we?
Um, on anything?
On anything.
So will you update the maps to have labels, area labels, because that is.
Do you need more than this?
I, I.
So part of the problem with our maps is they are huge files. Um, I'm having a hard time getting Utah Public notices to accept them. And then when we make them smaller, people go, it's too pixely, I can't see it. Um, so let me do some finagling there because, I mean, you can see how slow it is. These are really humongous files.
Did we address what Sittler requested? Cuz I know naming the maps was one of them.
Yeah, no, this should have all the, all of it on it.
All of what?
All the map issues.
All the map issues?
So we did a title block, we increased the end.
When did that happen?
Put a scale on and we put roads in.
Yeah.
The zoning, none of the zoning changed, we just increased clarity.
Yeah, will you flip to the Spanish Valley one, please?
Can you make it so we can?
Yeah, flip flop.
So it looks right?
Zoom, zoom, zoom. I know, right? Not a touchscreen, no.
You guys, um, I kinda missed it when you guys were talking about the gravel pits. Um, can you make it conditional in?
So gravel pits are protected and restored in the state of Utah, and so they. Instead of just making everything ag that might possibly be a gravel pit, I think it's best to leave it multi-use. Because they're a protected entity, you can come in and we have to write a way, we we're not waiting till December. We have to write a way, would do a uh zone change on it to open it up. But I think that's a better route, when you actually know where you want a gravel pit. Come in, we do the zone change within the month, and there you go.
The reason why I asked is up Spring Creek, the county traded Val Dalton for some ground out by.
We got that one fixed.
What's that?
It's fixed.
It's fixed?
Yeah.
Stop with it.
Okay, cuz that, that would, you know, if it was still in multiple use, which I, hey, I saw it still on the map there. That would shut the road department down from having gravel pit.
No, we've got all, as far as I know, all gravel pits are on ag at this point. Plus couple potentials, like maybe deckers.
I move so fast.
Hey, I was just watching the map and every time it would go by, that whole area is still purple.
I think we, I think we got it, let me, I'll go.
She took the mouse away from me.
Okay, this is her, she wants to make the barn available as a meeting space or wedding venue, maybe. A rental business, renting flatbed trailer or cargo trailer. Uh.
That's not a food truck.
Food court to the gemsto- to sell it, to the campers at the gemstone.
It's like ten uses.
But you can do all that in ag, though, can't you?
I've been pretty sure we got that one fixed.
Yeah.
Right, wait for it. Right there.
Okay.
Right, are you seeing it?
What?
That's gravel pit?
Oh.
I know Val has a gravel pit, but I'm not sure where exactly.
It is.
So I guess if you've got it there, you can't really see it underneath that.
There's nothing under here, there's a little bit right there. I think we got it, but I'll go look at it one more time, make sure we got that up there. Okay, so back to uh spot zoning outside of Monticello.
We're back to.
We're going back one farther.
Yeah.
Do you need, what do you need?
No, go ahead, do transways on it. What?
What do you need?
Um, the, the question was, is if they changed the food truck one in ag, does that not make ag cover everything that she was requiring?
Cuz she wants to do wedding venues, so like a camp, resort, covered, food truck covered.
Okay, then I think we're fine.
Okay.
Now, Lloyd.
In ag.
In ag.
In ag.
So you added food truck to ag?
Yep.
Okay. Go get the mouse back, girl.
Is it a definite baby?
Can you clarify the role of the code enforcer?
Yes, so, um, this is a new position, we haven't had code enforcement in the past. And that's why we have some of the messes we have. Um, most of our code enforcement comes from the business licenses, and that's why we decided to pull business licenses over into my apartment. Um, people come in, they apply for a business license, and we go, hey, wait a second, you need a conditional use permit, or hey, you can't do this here. And so eighty percent of them come from the business license, so we just decided to make that one in the same. Code enforcement is not what it used to be, we live in a very. Batshit crazy time, and I'll just say that on public record. We're not sending this guy out boots on the ground, he's gonna send you a letter. In two weeks, if we don't hear from you, we're gonna send you another letter, we still don't hear from you, now you're getting a fine. Okay, if we still don't hear from you, now we're putting a fine on your taxes. So the code enforcement officer isn't to be a heavy hand, it's to be a liaison to how to get you into compliance. There might be some compromising things, right, like, hey, my, I don't know, the hair salon. And this isn't going well, yeah, you can't do that, well, how can we move you towards becoming compliant? So he's more of a compliant liaison, and especially with the RVs, this is gonna become really, um. Important because people are gonna be displaced or in a bad way, right? And so he's, uh, we're hoping he, she has the resources there that, okay. This situation doesn't work, how can we make it work? Hey, I know a guy who does septic pro bono, let's call him. Um, so we're kinda playing good cop, bad cop at the same time because. We're not trying to shut anybody down. Um, communication's gonna be key, as long as you're talking to that person and. It's going well and, hey, I'm trying, and how can we do this or that, it's gonna go well, it's the. The ones we don't hear from, that we know that there's some shady dealings going on, and we don't hear from them, that's who we're gonna get.
Because I think, I mean, with my experience, like I said earlier, it really turned into this enormous tip line, calling your neighbor and.
But that's happening already.
But it's frustrating, like my neighbors cooking meth, and I call the cops, and they can't hear anything about it. But I can call and say, well, you have five camp trailers, and they're gonna get fined?
They're gonna come and check the license plate on them.
Yeah.
And can you?
Now, we're not SWAT team, so keep it within reason. But yeah, we we go out there and we're like, wow, this looks like crazy little meth camp. And you can't have this many RVs out here with no septic, and like, this just isn't a good situation.
How much meth can you, you're gonna catch?
So it's, it is another, it is another layer, we're not the sheriff, we're not SWAT. But it's another layer to try to get some stuff curbed before it gets out of hand.
I guess it's just saying, they'll have less. It takes more, like, can they, cro- how far can they cross the line to go check and see if they're in compliance?
Can they go on your property and check your cameras?
No, like, we can go, we do drive-bys, so you can go drive by and take pictures and. I mean, I have binoculared a guy in his bathrobe dumping his bucket out back, I don't really wanna see that again.
Do you, do you have like a specific description of, like a job description of the code enforcement officer?
Yep.
Is it included in this?
Nope.
So when you go hire one, it'll be available for the public to see the job description?
It's gonna be open internally first.
Well, okay, not just the description, but to the description, though. So I think that's the basis of our question, right?
I mean.
What's this guy gonna do?
I don't think we need to, if you want me to send it to you, I'd be happy to send it to you, but. Um, it's, it, code enforcement's changed, we're not coming out with the sheriff to take your dog, like, we're not doing that. This is like, hey, how can we help you get compliant and?
Like others who said, like, maybe you're not, but what is the next person you're going to be?
I mean, I got twenty-five. I mean, I got twenty-five years left, that's why I showed up tonight, so. Well, tonight almost did it, but here we are. So, um, I, I don't think it's, it's not this big bad guy coming to get you. It's not. Well, on the stuff that gets a little more serious, we'll tag team it, so I'll be out with, I'll be out in the film more too. And, and at some point when people cross the line way down the line. It just gets turned over to attorneys and, and they and the sheriff still with it. I don't think we need a statement, that's just a, just do it. Get on Facebook and make a statement to be neighborly. Yeah.
So maybe now's a good time to go over like the nuisance definition and the process.
So the nuisance ordinance is coming, but it is not a piece of this.
Well, we have a definition in here for it though, yeah?
Yeah.
So let's review that.
The nuisance ordinance, we have one in place now, it's okay. But we have one coming down the line that's fabulous. So as defined in this, this ordinance, separate document. A nuisance is anything that is injurious to health. Uh, indecent, oh indecent, sorry, my bad, I can read, I start reading. Offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property. So as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property. Something as an act, object, or practice, practice that invades. Or interferes with another's rights or interests. As a use of enjoyment of property by being offensive, annoying, dangerous, obstructive, or unhealthy.
Okay, and is the soon to be proposed nuisance ordinance kind of along those same lines?
Yeah.
But it just adds a process.
It's gonna, yeah, there's, there's process, there's, you know, the steps enforcement takes, there's, it's a lot more in depth.
So what, I mean, what if I want to have a pig farm?
We're coming for you, no. That's where the animal density would have helped you. I mean, that's why I was, I really wanted to keep it because then you. You can have four.
But if you give us, if you give us a pig, we'll turn a blind eye.
So, so that was where. I was, I was very pro keeping the animal density for this reason. Your neighbor calls you in and we don't have the animal density, you can't say, hey, 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 yeah, pigs smell, they poop. But I'm within the animal density standards of four pigs per acre, so I'm good. So now squeaky neighbor, your pigs stink, we go out there, we're like dang, those pigs stink. You don't have anything to fall back on. And so we, we really, I tried to explain that to people, it got shot down. But that was your protection against the nuisance. And we'll just have to take it on a case by case set play at this point.
Because I think you read annoying, like annoying to some, I mean, what is annoying?
Dude, I wanna pig. I wanna pig. Well, honestly, and I'll be, I'll be honest, I have a very squeaky little neighbor.
Property that's right next to a farm that's always been there, I mean. You know, people that are buying, they should look around and see what they're going to do.
But what if it's the other way, just saying, I mean, I, I totally agree with you that way, what if it's the other way?
The feedlot moves in next door to you.
You know?
There's state regulations on the feedlots.
Well, there's also, there's also a nuisance ordinance. You know, so if you, if you've got whatever horses pin on your two acres. You know, and, but the other guy was there first, you know, I mean, like, there is a problem there. I mean, there's probably not a decent neighbor. I mean, that's just, I mean, you, I mean, I don't know, I, I, I get where you're coming from, there's also the other too, there's, there's the. The four houses on one acre lot.
Well, it just, it goes.
I read today in state code, it, it even specifies in state code, if you're in ag. It says like beware, I mean, I read it today, it basically says beware of. Of animals, smells, sounds, whatever, and that's, you know, and, and I don't. That's where it got misconstrued a little bit, like we're talking about smaller acres with, I mean. Through two, three, four acres, not even, it never applied for anything over twenty, ever. You know, I, I just literally still today thought. And maybe I shouldn't say it, but there should be some minimum standard. I know we just got told that you don't want any. But if you have five dogs, five dogs over thirty-five pounds on an acre, right? Then, then it ought to be, you can have five more, it just ought to be conditional. And which means it's going to be approved, but the conditions are simply, I thought, would be, keep them on your property. Smell and noise, and if you can do that, have them all, there, there no, there shouldn't be any problem there. But it, it just kinda spun out into this, nobody wants, whatever, but I, I mean, if you're there first. I mean, they should beware, but if you're on Spanish Valley, I mean, we go back to Spanish Valley, cause we do incorporate, I mean. Encompass the whole county. It just makes it a little bit, those people may lose their rights a little bit. And, and I don't know if you could argue that there is a point where there's too many on that acre. Two acre, three acre lot, anything above four, I don't think anybody here ever really cared, like, go ahead.
Yeah, the point of the animal density standards was to protect animal rights to smaller lots, larger lots, we don't care. The rancher lots, we don't care. Um, but I'm not gonna revisit that, it's been omitted and we'll see how it goes. Cause I'm kinda over it.
Can we keep going?
Yeah, kinda did, I, I'm not sure how, if you wanna deal with this or what, but Susan, um. Carter, Carter, she brought up, I think she. Brought up truck stop. Um, and the fact that, it, it, at least the way I heard it, is that um truck stops are permitted use. In the highway commercial zone and given the particular one, I think she was hoping that maybe it could become a conditional use.
So we've. We've had the conversation that we cannot. Be making decisions on this ordinance based on one project that's stuck in litigation, that is likely gonna continue to just. Play out through litigation.
From the dues, you're making a decision. It doesn't matter, either decision, conditional or permitted, is a decision that affects that lawsuit and it, and it affects every other potential. Truck stop in the county.
But I think truck stops along highway commercials are a pretty good spot.
Decision and conditional is a decision. You're making a decision, so that, I, that's just, just to clarify, you're making a decision.
Yeah.
I mean, earlier, um, Kristen, you used, you said the truck stop, you used the truck stop as an example that would have conditions on. And, and that surprised me because it doesn't require conditions. Um, it, it actually seems to me that it would help. That by the county saying, no, we're not, we're not willing to discuss conditions on a truck stop, but we'll. Talk about conditions on RV parks, tell, you know, and we'll talk about conditions on. On whether or not li- where libraries should be, but not a truck stop? That seems odd to me, and so when you're talking about doing what's in the best interest of the county. It just seems to me that thinking about making, making a truck stop. Conditional across the board, again, we've been very clear that, that if they. If they can mitigate the things that are mentioned, they're gonna be approved.
I propose that we make truck stops conditional in highway commercial.
I'd go along with that. So do we make them their separate line item? Yeah, we have them as a separate line item before. There, there.
They be permitted if anywhere, if not highway commercial.
Right.
You don't want, why would you want to just permit a truck stop? Did you look at that handbook, that, that the US Department of Transportation wrote?
From our previous destruction.
How to cite them, where to cite them, and it takes some real consideration because it has long, you know, it has big impacts. It's not just that truck stop, it can be lots of other businesses that are coming in and you wanna cite it so that you can support that, you can't, you know, that business. To its maximum, you know, revenue potential and. So that's, you know, somewhere in the county, we need to set aside where we think. A really successful truck stop could operate. And everything it needs, highway access, where it's not dangerous or it's safe. Um, it's not gonna be a nuisance, it's not by residential, those are some of the criterias for. How that you properly cite a truck stop, cause you can do it right, and that handbook clearly, you know, walks you through. Why they do it, where they do it, and how you do it, right? So I, I think for sure where we're at in twenty twenty-five, when it comes to this, you know. First run of a major ordinance change, let's go c- conditional for now until we know. How the county develops and where these industrial zones would be best placed.
So in a previous conversation, the reason why we did put them together was because. If you look at a really big shell, it's almost a truck stop, Maverick down here is almost a truck, it is a truck stop.
For now, in twenty twenty-five, but what's to come in twenty years from now? You know, these are.
So that's why, I'm just saying, that's why we ended up putting them together is because it is blurred with the same uses.
We need a definition for a truck stop, travel center, not, that's different from a gas station.
Yeah, I, I think it has to do with this, how many trucks can stop at this Maverick over here, what's, what's the county lot, uh? But then they're just lined up down the road.
If they could have bought more property, they would have, I mean, it has.
I mean, at six o'clock in the morning, they are lined up and down this highway.
So and here's another thing, with the whole health thing, I, I mean, I live in the middle of La Grange Johnson. Have three thousand trucks a day driving around us, I mean, there's residents all around it, you know, it's no different than those trucks. We've got trucks sitting at the pit idling, waiting to be loaded, we got trucks at the scales waiting to be uh scaled out, they're all idling. These trucks are all idling, the loaders are running non-stop, I mean.
So add a truck stop on top of that, how's your air quality gonna be then?
I'm really not seeing any problems, I live in the middle of it. I'm a bell of health, man.
If you have a way to look at that, is the shell station going into Moab, it's actually a truck stop, it's gotta be big enough parking lot with a fuel bay.
It used to be.
Maverick has the fuel bays out on the side, trucks pull in and stop there, what's the difference?
Well, what we need is something with more capacity, something huge where they can accommodate a lot of trucks and that.
I'm not asking you to consider whether or not a truck stop should go there, I'm asking you to consider. That a truck stop has a tremendous impact on the community. There will most likely be a truck stop at seventy acres and what I do want.
So I gotta ask real quick.
But, but can we, can we throw the community a bone and all the neighbors around there and say? Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we will put conditions if we get a warrant. You make a site, it's not warranted.
So you're, um. What, what is it doing to the community, like, uh, like I've, I've been traveling a lot lately. I've been going to Loves, Flying Jays, Flying Jays gross, but, um, Loves, everyone I've been to is very clean. The parking lots are very clean, there's people using it, you know, waiting in line for the showers to be available. What's that?
It's the diesel.
Look at the one in Cedar City, look at the one in Salina, look at the one, you know, in Junction which gets closer.
Right.
Cortez.
If you look at them, they're pretty, Cedar City is way outside of town. And then it's a, a big one, and I'm not even clear, the one they're talking about, what size it's gonna be. Is it fifty-three bays, is it ninety-five bays, is there electric, is there not electric? I mean, one of the, just, just my opinion. And, and look, I, I know this has been a subject of litigation, and I hope you guys won't let that get in the way of doing what's right for the county. I know that's been a source of frustration for the county, Mitch. For the people in northern San Juan County who've had to pay a fortune to the lawyers to fight it. Um, I, like, I know that's, I know that's a source of frustration, but, I mean, the question right now is what's best for the county now? And what's the best for the county going forward, where there may, there may be a flying gate across the street from. Do you really wanna be in a situation where you say, you know, we think ninety-five bays are too many? Or we think they should be located further away from the residences so that the electrics. The electric ones are over here and the non-electric ones are over there. I mean, it seems to me a conditional empowers you to make those kind of decisions. And to help Loves make, or whoever, Flying Jay, whoever it's gonna be, make those kind of changes to their proposal. So that it makes sense, more sense, where it's gonna be located. So it's not just yes or no, we're not gonna allow, it's how we're gonna put it in. By making it conditional, which you made in community commercial and the other zones, just not in highway. You're empowering yourselves to be more active in the decision-making process about whether or how. That truck stop is gonna impact the community and whether, like the second one that goes in across the street. Needs to make some mitigation, mitigating efforts, in light of the fact that now there are going to be two of them, so it's not, it's not, yes or no, I'm. We're resigned to the fact that it's gonna go there, right? I mean, the only thing that'll stop it is the highway department saying, you know, we gotta have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve feet. From the center line and Loves goes, God, we don't have a big enough piece of later. But other than that, it's gonna go in there, and you guys are gonna say yes to it. Uh, but think about empowering yourself.
Oh, Kobe'll stop you because. We're, I'll tell you what. I will endorse a conditional use.
Yeah.
And, but I'm thinking right now, I'm not gonna put any conditions on it, just like you said, but. But I'll endorse a conditional use.
Carter comes in or somebody else, you'll listen.
Yeah.
And then you'll, you'll make that decision.
Okay, okay, moving on, uh, let's.
Are we going to conditional use?
No, we need to get. Yeah.
Anne, I'm a for conditional use truck stops.
True.
I could do a C there.
You, uh, cross the board.
No.
And, no.
No, just where they're at.
Just Highway Court.
Yeah.
Industrial?
It's appropriate.
Should be a C?
I think it's a P.
It's a P because that's where you want them.
Okay.
But we don't have any, hardly any industrial.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna go make a trucker sleep in an industrial zone, I'm just not gonna do it.
Okay, then see, I see it across.
Uh, conditional and highway commercial.
Okay, change has been made to make it conditional highway commercial.
What was Lloyd's answer?
Yeah, what was Lloyd's answer?
I don't even know.
Didn't care?
Moving on, let's go, I haven't slept in forty-eight hours, that's all.
Did we cover, uh, Mr. Curtis Pugh's taxidermy shop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about Sittler? What did they put, what were they, they asking for?
Mapping.
Clear maps?
Names.
What else? Can we look at that email real quick?
Like, we need to clarify that it's not Sittler, it's a person.
Oh, I'm sorry, the representative for Sittler?
Sometimes.
I think the zoning maps need to be named.
Well, that's the one from today, I think she's talking about the one we got a couple of days ago.
Right.
Worst of you, comments from Mark.
I know how you feel.
Yeah. Whatever he wants, let's just do it. And I know that went on the air.
Um, I don't wanna do this, super confusing. That's why I didn't put it on our thing. It's just to label the maps, but we have the maps labeled and it's clean and clear and that made it really bizarre. Um, on that note, she wanted to reference the maps within the ordinance and we do not. We just say the use table or the maps, we don't say any specifics. We actually cut this document down in about half of what it originally was. Anything that Utah State Code covers, we deferred anything we could to them. So before we leave, I just wanna show you really quick, if you look up Utah State Code.
Wow.
It looks like this, we're on Title Seventeen as counties, and then here's all of our stuff, land use is twenty-seven. Okay, so, um, anything covered in here, we're gonna be referencing this document a lot more because we, we didn't wanna just repeat it. Things change in here, so now we don't have to update our ordinance, it's just already updated with Utah State legislation every year. And, um, so just know that we took a ton out, that's, they've got it covered in here for us.
So this is where you can find who the appeal authority is.
Um. So our appeal authority.
This is the administrative law judge.
Yeah. So any appeals would go directly to MAC, and then he would forward them to the administrative law judge.
And that's laid out in our ordinance.
Yeah.
You good, Ann?
Yes, thanks.
So, young Mr. Frankham here that just bought a farm in Monticello, I don't think he's here anymore, but he had talked about, um, feeling pretty constricted with the new plan, do any of you guys know what he was talking about or anything that we can address?
With the what plan?
Uh, he's a young fellow that just bought a farm here in Monticello. Talked about the ordinance conflicts with their plan for their new farm, uh, and asked us to make a best effort to help young farmers and not to fight them, you have any idea what he was referring to?
I mean, most of it's Ag. Hold on, let me find my song.
He does a lot of different things.
Does he?
He's got, he's a welder, he does fabricating, he's got equipment, equipment rentals. Mechanics, I don't know what all of this.
All right.
He does, he's pretty ambitious and he does a lot.
I mean, but all that primarily based around the agribusiness though, yeah? Yeah.
The animal, the animal use, we got a part of it, we use trucking.
Oh, so everything that he does is gonna be permissible or conditional, so I don't see an issue.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask you to speak for him or anything, I was just wanted to make sure that we kinda hit on that while we were here. Thank you.
Just trying to help.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
He does everything like everybody else in the county.
Yeah, right.
I think it boils down to the nuisance definition, because everything else is permissible, but if your neighbor doesn't want you to have whatever at your farm, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing is, is you can tell when it's bad. Versus, hey, this guy's just welding my back.
But, but it is subjective.
But it is subjective.
You know.
Have way more sensitive noses.
You, you know, when you've got green on your boot, you just look down and say it's money.
I don't even recognize it. I have it away here, if it's green or brown.
Right.
I don't think you'll get that petty, like, it's gonna be pretty. We'll come out, we'll take a look, you know, I might even give you a call, hey, can I come take a look, don't shoot. And we'll just come take a look, if everything looks cool, it's like, looks good to me. You know, if you got like
No.
Parkas out back or something where they're on fire, I'm gonna be like, what the heck's going on here?
I think we're ready. How many animals can you have, yeah, so we can go up to eight now.
All right, we can come good then.
What did you have for Spanish Valley, would you, what delivered in that?
Oh, I was wondering why there was a jog in the commercial that didn't follow the creek, it was the granny. For the most part, the commercial followed the creek human out through, but I seen that one jog almost in the highway.
I don't know what item number that is, five?
Yeah.
Cause I shut my computer off, cause.
Cause you were done?
Well, Lloyd kept thinking he needed the mouse and, and he kept trying to.
You know, this is the first time I've had this in house in almost a year.
Consideration approval of the two thousand twenty-five land use development and management ordinance. You can make a motion approving the two thousand twenty-five land use development and management ordinance with the changes discussed tonight, which I will verify with you tomorrow morning, it's gonna be a long night for me. Or you may make a motion denying the two thousand twenty-five land use development and management ordinance based on findings of fact due to the following reasons, and you gotta state substantial evidence of why.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-five land use development and management ordinance at, with the, uh, changes we've discussed.
Recommend?
Recommend.
I moved that, oh, well, it's been approved.
This is approved.
Oh.
Don't we just recommend it to the commissioners?
Nope.
I got a motion and a second.
We need discussion.
I thought we recommended it.
I got discussion.
Okay.
Or, uh, I mean, or I should say I have a counter motion. Um, I move that we table the approval of this land use development and management ordinance on the basis of lack of public input until the night of the passing of this ordinance, and would like more time to, um, make sure that those people who did not make it to this meeting still have a shot at requesting their particular zone or use needs.
Okay, you got a counter motion? Any second?
Did you put a date on how long to table it?
Till the next planning commission meeting.
All right.
I'll second Melissa's. Sheridan.
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 Oh, can I vote for Melissa's?
Okay, Anne's motion dies for the need of a second, um, got a motion and a second to approve the two thousand twenty-five land use development and management ordinance. Any more comment, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay, I've got a big nay.
Okay.
This is not good for Spanish Valley, I think, there's no way I can vote for it.
So why are we approving this, not just a recommendation?
It's gotta be approved by both boards, cause it's, um.
That's what we did with subdivision.
Oh, you weren't here.
Oh, I watched it, I didn't wanna be involved.
Right.
I was late at thirty minutes, I just figured, I watched you guys on Facebook.
Out in the parking lot, building permit.
Thank you.
I hope everybody is pleased, or, you know, at least felt like you got some input.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, here's your, here's building input.
Wearing cowboy boots, what color? Of green.
Questions on building permits?
There's the one that.
Lloyd's?
Lloyd's.
Lloyd.
Twice, he's in there.
Fifty something hundred dollars for that permit.
See ya.
Okay.
Good night.
Sorry. We've got a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it, thank you, all in favor?
I'm gonna keep working on it.
You know, I actually have a good time here.